Talking to the students that were participating, the administrators, the teachers, the superintendent, the community members, and I think that there's a lot to be learned there. So I'm really, really eager for the information that comes out in today's hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Caban. I'd like to remind everyone who wishes to testify in person today that you must fill out a witness slip which is located on the desk of the Sergeant at Arms near the entrance of this door. Please fill out the slip even if you're already registered in advance that you'll be testifying in person today. If you wish to testify on introduction three or any of the resolutions, please indicate on the witness slip whether you're here to testify in favor or in opposition to the legislation. I also want to point out that we will not be voting on any legislation today to allow as many people as possible to testify. Testimonies will be limited to three minutes per person, whether you're testifying in person or on Zoom. I'm also going to ask my colleagues to limit their questions and comments to five minutes. Please note that witnesses who are here in person will testify before those who have signed into the Zoom webinar. I also want to acknowledge my other colleagues who are present, Councilmember Lee, Councilmember Lewis, Councilmember Hanks, Councilmember Dinowitz, Councilmember Felice, Councilmember Bacher, Deputy Speaker Ayala, Councilmember Menon, Councilmember Holden, Brennan, Gutierrez, Caban, Ayala, De La Rosa, Sanchez, Stevens, Hanif, Narcisse, Krishnan, and Ang. Thank you for joining us. I know. I will now turn it over to the committee counsel, Nadia Jean-François, to administer the oath.
Good afternoon. I will call on each of you individually for a response. Please raise your right hand. You can all raise your right hand. Thank you. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before these committees and to respond honestly to council member questions? For New York City Public Schools, Mark Rampersant. Robin Davison. Mary Shimon. Erin Barnett. Gillian Smith. For NYPD. Andy Shrenarian.
Yes.
Tracy Ryan.
Yes.
Julianne Ferugia.
Yes.
Kevin Taylor.
Yes.
Denise Yohé. Ryan Malcolm. Josephine Turlone. Thank you so much. Who do you want to hear from first, NYPD or NYPD?
Also would like to recognize Councilmember Ariola.
NYPD, you may begin your testimony first.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Hanks, Chair Joseph, and other council, other members of the council. I am Inspector Kevin Taylor, commanding officer of School Safety Division of the City of the New York Police Department. I am joined here today by Assistant Commissioner Andy Schiverin, Director Turlone from the School Safety Division, and Julianne Ferugia, the managing attorney of the department's Legislative Affairs, as well as our partners from the New York City Public Schools. On behalf of Police Commissioner Edward Caban, I would like to thank you for this opportunity to work, to being, I would like to discuss the important work that's being done by our school safety agents, provide information and bring, provide information and initiatives being introduced into our schools this school year, and comment on the bill that's being heard here today. Our New York City Public Schools system is made up of over 1,800 schools that reside in over 1,400 physical buildings. The safety of each and every one of our school, each and one of our students and faculty member, is necessary to provide the best environment for children to learn and succeed. Our school safety promotes the protection of all students from violence, exposure to weapons, bullying, illegal weapons, and contraband. This is the core mission of the School Safety Division. If a student experiences a constant sense of uncertainty while traveling at school or traveling to and from, then we have failed them even before the real work has begun. We are focused on providing students the freedom to learn and to reach their full potential in a safe environment, and the partnership between the NYPD and the DOE is crucial to this goal. Our dedicated school safety agents are skilled professionals who represent the diversity of the city. In fact, about 73% of our school safety agents are women. Every day, they make the NYPD and the communities that they serve proud while continuing to do more with less, just like every aspect of this department. We are down approximately 1,000, 1,000 school safety agents as compared to our pre-pandemic staffing levels. But each of our 3,930 school safety agents remain committed to building the personal relationships with students and staff. We would not be experiencing the successes we have seen without the solid relationships our school safety agents have developed with principals, administrators, teachers, parents, and of course, our students. One of the most challenging aspects of a school safety agent is handling a child in However, our school safety agents rise to this challenge to keep everyone involved safe. This is a tribute to the multiple levels of training our school safety agents receive. Initially, our school safety candidates must complete a 20-week training program at the police academy. During this time, they receive, they receive training in police science, behavioral science, physical education, and tactics. These programs are all focused on many diverse topics such as bullying, the LGBTQIA+ community, tactical communication, de-escalation. The academy training is including, it also includes a 10-day therapeutic crisis intervention and school training given by the New York City Public Schools. I am also now requiring each and every school safety agent to participate in a one-day in-service course on first aid, mental health, that will be taught by our department. This is all on top of the training that school safety agents receive throughout the year in areas such as mediation, response to active shooter situations, and other emergency conditions. In partnership with the Department of Education, the School Safety has established a new pilot reporting platform for all new, all public and charter schools here in New York City. The new NYPD School Safety tip line will allow students, parents, teachers, staff, and even the general public to report suspicious activity, potential threats against schools, school safety concerns, and more. The tip line will also help support mental health concerns, bullying, cyberbullying, and self-harm concerns. The tip line will be managed by and monitored 24 hours a day, seven days a week, by school safety personnel. There will be three ways to report information regards to the new School Safety tip line. You can call, you can text, you can use the Safer Watch app to report by selecting your school, then selecting the incident that takes type that would take, that would like your report, that you would like to report. We have all heard something, we have all heard the saying, "If you see something, say something." The Safer Watch app is, the Safer Watch app is our new Pilot 360-degree approach to school safety that will also use, be used to notify parents about serious situations that are happening in school. The Pilot application currently is in five schools, which allows administrations to quickly alert School Safety Division of dangerous situations such as an active shooter of violence near or around the school, which also will trigger a hard lockdown, and that's our panic button as well. That's on all of our school safety agents' cell phones. We are now in initial stages of a program which will require the front door of every public school to be locked. This will involve installing cameras, two-way speakers at each entrance to allow school safety agents to access who is, who is seeking entrance into our schools and why. Our biggest achievement in technology for school safety and in the nation perhaps is a state-of-the-art, real-time command center located in School Safety Headquarters. The Command Center will be staffed with school safety to monitor the police, radio feeds, cameras in areas around school buildings, and are able to immediately alert patrol officers of serious incidents occurring outside or near school buildings. This is the first time a Command Center model has been made to school safety having eyes outside of the school has already proven to be valuable tool. This is the first time as a model has been done like this for school safety solely. One of the duties of a school safety agent is to confiscate contraband entering into our schools, including weapons. As a civilian member of the force, school safety does this bravely without carrying a weapon of their own. School safety cannot protect our students if they are in danger of themselves. So that is why we decided to collaborate with New York City Public Schools administrators to equip our school safety agents with ballistic vests. Everyone involved agreed that this is the best way to protect our agents while contributing to a school environment that is comfortable and conducive to learning. To further promote school safety of our students, the NYPD created the Youth Response Team, YRT. YRT consists of school safety agents, specially selected NYPD uniform officers that will safeguard students as they travel to and from school. This means there is a high visibility of NYPD presence along major travel routes. The team is currently in three boroughs, Manhattan, the Bronx, and Brooklyn. However, many of, may be deployed, may be deployed anywhere depending on the intel received that day. Next, I would like to discuss the bill that's being heard here today, intro number three. This bill would also establish a rigid procedure for responding to children in emotional crisis and limit the use of mechanical restraints in those scenarios. The bill would also require training on identifying and responding to children in emotional crisis, and to report this training to the council. The department has concerns regarding the strict nature of the bill's language that would delay the NYPD's response to extreme serious emergency situations. We are all in agreement that students in crisis must be treated with the greatest sensitivity. This is why the department has implemented Patrol Guide Procedure 215-13, which governs how and when an agent, a police officer, may or may not use restraints on a student, and Patrol Guide Procedure 215-17, which introduces a layer of checks and balances within the police department. The, the procedure dictates, this procedure dictates when we would make arrests inside the New York City Public School Buildings. To codify into law, many of the same procedures that the department has already abides by will create unnecessary stringent restrictions on what already there, what already there of our very nature, time-sensitive, and potential dangerous situations. We do support the intent of the bill and look forward to having a dialogue about the best ways of achieving the bill's goals. In closing, the NYPD takes the responsibility of safe learning environment for every school very seriously and look forward to continuing our partnership with the DOE and to ensure that our mutual goal to keeping children safe is met in, day in and day out. I thank you for this opportunity to speak with you today, and I am pleased to answer your questions and pass it off to my colleague.
Mark?
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chair Joseph, Chair Hanks, and all of the New York City Council members on education and public, public safety here today. My name is Mark Rampersant, and I am the Chief of Safety and Prevention Partnerships for New York City Public Schools. I am joined here today by my colleagues, Robin Davison, Executive Director of School Climate and Culture, Gillian Smith, Executive Director of School Counseling, Co-School Counseling Programs, Erin Barnett, Deputy Executive Director of Safety and Prevention Partnerships, and Mary Shamin, Director of Crisis. I'm also joined here today, as you see, by our partners in the NYPD and the School Safety Division, who already shared testimony this afternoon. We thank you for the opportunity to discuss our ongoing efforts to ensure that our schools are safe and supportive, our environments for our young people. At New York City Public Schools, we are committed to ensuring complete safety where our students feel physically safe and benefit from the intentional presence of programs that center on emotional wellness in the form of trusting relationships, equity, affirmation, compassion, dignity, and respect. To achieve, to achieve complete safety, we cannot do this alone. Through partnerships with other, other city agencies, community, and faith-based organizations, parents as partners, and with our students, we strive to create, create secure and affirming environments in which teaching and learning can take place each day and students are valued and respected. Last school year, Chancellor Banks announced a comprehensive plan to reimagine school culture and student safety. Students reach their greatest potential when they are both physically and emotionally safe. In building upon existing practices in schools, this comprehensive plan was developed to create, create a pathway towards success for all students. This plan includes both physical, physical as, as well as emotional safety elements such as enhanced training in emergency readiness for staff, communication applications for schools, increased access to social workers, social workers, supports sustaining SEL and restorative, restorative practices, and the launching of a new initiative called Project Pivot. We continue to build upon these elements outlined in, in the, in the plan and happy to elaborate on those items for you to do. To ensure that our schools are prepared to address any emergency, we provide training opportunities for staff and students in emergency readiness, specifically our general response protocols. To continue to build capacity of our school staff, in school year 2223, we enhanced our emergency readiness training in collaboration with the NYPD, augmenting our existing GRP, augmenting our existing GRP. This enhanced training focused on responding to an active threat and introduced the concept of run, hide, fight. This concept was incorporated in the existing training schools receive annually. In addition, the school year 2223, New York City Public Schools launched a real-time push communication application referred to as Grade Attendance Messaging Application, which we know as Gamma. This application allows schools to communicate updates on incidents and activities with staff, students, and families in multiple languages such as any school closing or the case of an emergency such as a lockdown shelter-in or an evacuation. Since the launch of Gamma messaging tool, as of October 12th, over 1,200 schools have used the messaging application. We always, we're always, we are always exploring new and innovative ways to strengthen our safety and security procedures. In February, we expanded upon the Comprehensive Safety Plan when we announced the Safer Access Door Locking Initiative, which will allow schools to use the up-to-date, scalable door locking technology to lock the main entrance doors to the schools during the day except for morning entry and dismissal. The front door will be outfitted with a new technology for first responders to access during an emergency. This technology will be installed in three phases, with phase one, which includes 744 schools prioritizing elementary sites currently on the way. We anticipate that this full project will be complete by June 25. All school staff will be trained in the functionality of this new technology, and schools have been prioritized, I mean, I'm sorry, provided with, with signage to be posted on the main entrance as well as a letter to share with families. We also worked with our partners in District 75 to ensure that the system meets the needs of individuals with disabilities. Also in February, Mayor Adams and Chancellor Banks announced, I'm sorry, Chancellor Banks called for increased communications between our school leaders and NYPD precinct commanders and scheduled a meeting for principals to meet weekly with the commanders of their respective precincts to discuss any safety concerns or community issues, upcoming events, and opportunities for collaborations. Our principals continue to meet regularly with their local precinct commanders currently. This school year, our superintendents will be participating in a monthly meeting with NYPD Borough Commanders to discuss district-wide safety concerns, upcoming district events, and other opportunities to collaborate with the Borough Commanders. Strengthening our efforts to create an ecosystem of support, in September of 20, I'm sorry, September of '22, New York City Public Schools launched a new initiative called Project Pivot. This builds upon prior investment prioritizing students' well-being, physical and emotional safety to address external incidents involving youth. At its core, Project Pivot is a, is a true connection between school and community-based partners, most of which have a shared understanding of the community's needs. To date, schools can select from approximately 170 grassroots community-based partners that have an intimate knowledge of the communities they serve and have known presence in the neighborhoods. These community-based organizations engage students in positive activities during the school day, after-school, and/or Saturday hours to build relationships with positive influences and offer services including safety and violence prevention programs, mentoring, leadership, career readiness, attendance support, and enrichment through arts and sports, et cetera. This initiative commenced with 144 schools in, in school year 2223 and expanded to 250 schools this school year. Schools have recently received funding for this school year and are either selecting their partners or have selected their partners and commenced the services. We remain committed to enhancing social-emotional learning and restorative justice practices in schools. Elementary schools, elementary K to 5 schools will continue to have ongoing professional development and access to digital resources, grade-specific curriculum, and activities designed for relationship building through the Harmony Program. We are building the capacity of our school staff supporting grades K to 5 to incorporate SEL into academic instruction. We are also strengthening RJ in schools geared toward disrupting and dismantling systematic practices detrimental to students' growth and achievement. Restorative justice practices allow schools to build and foster relationships, stronger relationships with students, teach strategies for self-management while building community and preventing conflict, preventing conflict and violence in their school communities. Thanks to the continued advocacy of the, of the council, New York City Public Schools introduced RJ practices in 25 schools in 2016. Today, we have expanded restorative practices in very varying levels in over 900 schools citywide. Thanks again to the continued support and advocacy of the City Council, New York City Public Schools has been able to increase our allotment of school social workers and school counselors to over 5,000 to date to allow us to ensure that schools at a minimum have access to a social worker, counselor, school-based mental health clinic, or a community-based mental health clinic provided, providing onsite, ensuring a strong foundation of support for all of our students. Our Central Crisis Support Team, known as CCST, is centrally based and is comprised of licensed supervisors, supervisors, and social workers who provide immediate short-term support for school communities impacted by crisis such as the death of a community member, a beloved student, fire, or community violence that may affect our schools directly. Our CCST develops and facilitates professional, professional learning for school-based social workers with a focus on culturally relevant trauma-informed practices, de-escalation, adverse child, childhood experiences, as well as other topics with support, which support social emotional growth. Recognizing that our school communities can benefit from additional supports, we are adding capacity by partnering with higher education institutions to build social work, to, sorry, to place social work interns in our schools to support students and families. In addition, we met with our higher education partners to review and align curriculum to ensure it targets the skills needed to be, to be an effective social worker in a New York City public school to date, to date, through 18 partnerships such, such as with Fordham University, New York University, Columbia University, Hunter College. Columbia University, Hunter College, and Stony Brook University, we have placed 203 social work interns in 29 of our 32 districts across the city. To continue building capacity, we received state certification to continue education units. I'm sorry, to offer continued education units for social workers last year, requiring all social workers to maintain their license and additionally, additional strategies. As a CEU provider, we are able, through our CCST supervisors, to offer up to eight CEU courses during the academic year. In 2019, New York City Public Schools and the NYPD revise its MOU, I mean, their memorandum of standing, governing police engagement in schools, stressing our joint commitment to ensure that schools are safe and supportive environments for students. The Office of Safety and Prevention Partnerships work in lockstep with our partners in the NYPD and School Safety Division. And together, we continue to establish safety protocols and procedures in schools to develop school safety and emergency readiness plans and training for school safety agents across various topics. School safety agents are intricate, I'm sorry. They are integrated into our school communities from the first day. During the academy, new school safety agent recruits participate in a 10-day training led by facilitators from New York City Public Schools that cover an array of topics, including school governance, chancellor's regulations, school climate bullying, crisis de-escalation, youth mental health, first aid, suicide awareness, child abuse, and supporting individuals with disabilities, with a focus on students with autism. We are happy to share that this year, in collaboration with the NYPD Training Unit, under the supervision of Chief Obay, staff from the, from New York City Public Schools Office of Special Education is facilitating a training on supporting individuals with disability with a focus on autism for new recruits in the NYPD Police Academy, as well as NYPD field trainers, as well as New York City Police Department field trainers. In addition, we are assisting, we are assisting in the development of a curriculum that the NYPD can turnkey to senior NYPD personnel in an effort to equip schools with the tools to de-escalate student behavior in line with the chancellor's regulation A411, which outlines the policy on responding to behavioral crisis and when to call 911 for an emergency medical services. We introduced therapeutic crisis interventions in schools during the spring of 2015. Since then, we have trained approximately 6,000 staff members in various roles, including school administrators, teachers, counselors, and other school staff. In collaboration with the NYPD School Safety Division, we have trained 350 level, 350 Level III school safety agents and supervisors. Since school year 2223, key components of TCIS are embedded into the, into the training provided to new NYPD school safety agent recruits in the academy. We have trained over 580 new recruits to date. In school year 2223, the number of EMS transports for emotional, psychological conditions of a student decreased by 2.2% when compared to the year prior. We are happy to see the numbers trending down, but there is still much more work to be, for us to do. We are continuing to work with our school communities to ensure that students experiencing a behavioral crisis are addressed in a supportive manner where they are able to receive the help they need. In conclusion, I would like to reiterate that safety is not only meeting the physical needs of our students, but also the emotional well-being of students, and we continue to work toward ensuring that our students are both physically and emotionally safe in schools. As Chancellor Banks reminds us, it takes a village. And with continued support from council and our city agency partners, we strive to ensure that our students are supported, both academically and socio-emotionally, and are equipped with the tools necessary to reach their full potential. Thank you today for the chance to testify on these important topics and answer any questions.
Thank you. First question for New York City Public Schools. Please provide data on how many times SSAs were called upon in 2022 and 2023 in this year, in this school year to date, to address incidents?
Yes, thank you for that question, Chair Joseph. So, to date, we've had approximately six, oh, well, last school year, right? So, we're going to do a full school year. Last school year, SSAs responded to over 6,000 behavioral incidents in school.
And how many times were they, they led to suspension? What kind of data do you have in terms of principal suspension, superintendent's suspension, also by gender, by race, and IEP status as well?
Yes, okay. So, of that 6,000 responses, 58, over 5,800, I'm sorry, 16,000 responses, over 5,800 resulted in a suspension. And it is super imperative that, that I sort of reiterate that the SSA's response to an incident, and these incidents are in varying, varying level, has no bearing on a suspension administered by, by the educator, right? The two are not sort of succinct in response because they're responding to incidents at various levels, and our incidents range from 1 to 5. And as it relates to, when compared to, the next question, I'm sorry, was?
How are they related by gender, race, or IEP? Does the students have IEPs, boys versus girls?
So, we definitely do have a breakdown of incidents overall. We def, we will provide, I apologize, we will provide that, that information to council. I know it's pretty early to say that we will provide the information. As we break it down, it just requires us to use a different level of business rules in order to ascertain that information for you, but we are committed to providing that information for you.
You know, I will be providing a follow-up, as I always do, to get these questions answered. Does SSA work directly with social workers and counselors at the schools directly?
So, when we say working directly with social workers and counselors, obviously, the role of an SSA is much different than a school counselor and a, a social worker. So, in working hand-in-hand, we talked about response to, to emotional crisis incidents.
Correct.
When it's, when a school, for the first people to respond to an emotional crisis is the, the school crisis team. And when they respond, they employ all of the tools in their kit. The SSAs are the last people, last employees to respond to a crisis incident. So, when you say, do they work with counselors? They work with councils in that respect, but obviously, the roles of a counselor and an SSA are much different. But the entire school community is called upon when responding to a crisis.
So, if they don't work together, so if a child is having an emotional breakdown, they are not the first ones to call? SSA is there in the schools? From what, from some experience I've had, SSAs usually be the first one to step in before they call a guidance council or social worker?
No, so if a student is-
So, the protocol is wrong?
The, the protocol, as outlined in chancellor's regulations, if we have a child who is in crisis, the crisis team responds first, right? The crisis team responds first and employ all of their training before getting to a level where an SSA may be needed.
So, we might have to be do, we might have to be going, we might have to go back and do some retraining. How often do you retrain some of your SSAs?
Well, the SSA training, I will leave to the school staff, but as it relates to the training for the school safety agents, as shared in testimony, we train them in the academy. And then, when there are those opportunities where we have breaks, we do some in-service training in conjunction with the NYPD.
How often does that happen?
Annual, it's annual.
It's annual?
It's rotating, right? But we are in every, every graduating class. Every time there's a new class of school safety agents coming in, we are in for 10, we, New York City Public Schools, are in for 10 days to provide training on the varying topics.
How are your SSAs trained to deal with D-75 population?
So, we bring in our specialists from District 75 to train school safety agents on working with our young people who have disabilities, and there's an added focus for our young people with autism.
That was a bill the council passed, and it was very important to us.
Yeah, very, super important, and we appreciate you passing that bill.
That was Councilmember Narcisse.
Councilmember?
Narcisse.
Thank you for that. And one of the things that we did build upon, we thought it important that we work with our school safety agents, but we also thought it important that we work with police officers, right? And so, since, since your last hearing, we were able to work with Chief Obay, and we've had two sessions so far with brand-new police cadets in the police academy, as well as police trainers to ensure that they understand working with our young people and disabilities, as well as our students with autism.
Earlier, you spoke about being culturally relevant as your SSA's, SSA's school that speak the language that reflect the body after school?
Repeat.
Language. Earlier in your testimony, you said you do, you're culturally relevant, are SSAs trained in language as well?
I don't know when you say "language."
Language, a language other than English.
I don't know, we don't train-
You'll get back to me on that?
Yeah, we'll work with our partners in NYPD regarding language training for school safety agents.
How many social worker vacancy are at the New York City Public Schools right now?
All right, I'm going to turn to my colleague, Jillian Smith, to provide that information for you. Thank you for the question.
Good afternoon. As of October 19th, we have 17 social worker vacancies and 14 school counselors vacancies.
How many school counselors?
14.
And what, and do you plan on filling those positions?
Yes, those positions are all school-based, so principals are actively working to fill those positions.
Can you provide where?
I can, I can send that to you after where the vacancies are. But also, just wanted to add that the vacancies, as you know, are fluid. So, whether people get promoted or leave, but we are working to fill them, but we'll get that to you.
In February this year, the DOE signed a new contract to lock the front entrance of their buildings. How many schools currently implemented a front door system?
So, as shared, we are starting this project in phases. 754, I'm sorry, 744 schools are our target elementary schools for phase one. We're in about 150 or so schools in various, variant levels from start to full implementation.
And how many will be added in the 2023, 2024 school year?
23, 23, 24 school year. We want to, we want to be able to have all of our, all 744 schools and start it in phase two with a full completion, with high schools included, by its summer, June of '25.
What are the protocols? Recently, there was a student who said he was being beat up. He ran back into the school, correct? And the SSA had asked him to leave because it was in the middle of dismissal. I can always send that information over to you.
Well, I can tell you, Chair Joseph, there is no place for any such activity should occur in our school. And what you're describing is a student who went back to the school, rang the bell, and was told to leave?
This was in a high school.
In a high school?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, yeah, I don't know of any high schools that have had the system installed.
No, they don't have the system, but I'm just giving you the protocol. Is, if I'm running away from someone and I run into the school building?
Right.
What is the protocol once I enter the building?
So, yeah.
Kevin Taylor, go ahead, sir.
I'm sorry, but thank you. Our protocol is to make sure that our schools are a safe haven. Make no mistake about it. Our schools, I want our kids to come back. If they feel, if they feel any kind of way of being in danger out there, they are to come back to the school, and I'll look into that matter if that's the case.
And I will send over the information to you.
Thank you.
So, what are the protocols if the front door is locked around people coming in late, students arriving late, parents coming for conferences, or teachers stepping out for lunch, or on their prep, moving their cars, or whatever they're, we usually do.
It's the same protocol that we have regards to visiting, visitors. If someone steps out, they'll be clearly identified. If there's the case of where our agent knows who the person is, I want them to use common sense to make sure that we, that prevails as well. So, if there's a teacher that walks out the building, we know that, hey, I'm familiar with Mrs. Thompson. No, Ms. Thompson doesn't have the show ID to come right back inside the building.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hanks?
Thank you, Chair Joseph. So, I'm going to jump right into it. Can I just start by doing a follow-up question? I don't know if, if Chair Joseph had asked this. When it comes to the programs that you mentioned in your opening statement, are these all in all five boroughs?
Yes. Specific programs like Project Pivot?
Yes, yeah, Project Pivot, but there's also social workers. We want to make sure that, that there's borough equity. Being from Staten Island?
Yeah, yeah.
I always have to ask.
So, definitely Staten Island, we do have Project Pivot in Staten Island. And Restorative is in all boroughs throughout the city, as well as our social work initiative is in 29 out of 32 of our districts. We will definitely get you the-
Thank you.
The districts that are not covered. I'm sure Staten Island is covered.
It is.
It is covered, yep, there you go.
I also wanted to commend you, it was really exciting. I was the co-prime sponsor on Councilmember Narcisse's bill with the autism, and it was really wonderful to hear that it's been implemented and you taking that very seriously, so I commend you. My questioning will be to NYPD. Before I get started, you know, it's not lost on me, being from Staten Island, we've had a series of, of young people killing each other ages 13 and 14. And I just wanted to say for the record that we understand the tough work that you do, especially school safety. Many of them are women and women of color who are in this profession. And so, we will have some tough questions, but I wanted to also just commend you and thank you for all the hard work that you do. But we can always be better, yes?
Yes.
We're going to just start with the school safety overview for the public to understand. What are the specific responsibility of school safety agents in ensuring the safety of students and staff?
We want to make sure that our schools are safe. So, their primary mission is to make sure our kids are safe within that school and around that school. So, we take that very seriously. That's where all the training comes into place. But that's our primary mission, is to make sure kids are safe in school. Our kids are safe in New York City Public Schools.
Thank you. What are the pros and cons of the Department Authority of School Safety Agents being under the Department of Education versus the New York Police Department?
Bottom line, is the New York City Police Department, the NYPD, make no mistake about it, we're the best at keeping people safe, and that's the reason why keeping it under the NYPD, keeping schools under NYPD is the best way to do.
Just to follow up also-
Thank you.
On what Inspector Taylor said. We, while we are, or our school safety is, is currently under the NYPD, we are working in lockstep with New York City Public Schools, as you heard in training, in our response within the schools. And we confer constantly, the dialogue is constantly open with them to discuss what the best way to handle situations are.
Thank you for that. Are there instances where a principal and the school safety agent disagree on a course of action? What happens in an event of a disagreement?
If it's a something that's administrative, obviously it's gonna go right back to public schools and let them handle it. If we're talking about something in criminal nature, then obviously the New York City Police Department will step in at that time.
Okay, I do have a follow-up question with that. So for the DOE, I'm just gonna flip over here because it's in the same vein. What procedures and processes are included in the DOE's disciplinary code? And how does the DOE aim to address student misconduct before it escalates in needing police intervention?
So first and foremost, for all of, all of the cases where we have a student discipline incident that transpires, depending on the, the levels of, of, of the incident, we are, we are adamant about having our school staff employ all of the resources that they have at their fingertips, right? Training in restorative justice, the whole process of de-escalation, de-escalating incidents before they raise to a level of needing the support of the NYPD or others. It is intentional that we, the changes that we made to the discipline code included all of these interventions that we wanted to administer before we get to a punitive measure, right? Utilizing the support of our guidance counselors, social workers, utilizing a caring adult in the school who we can step in and talk to the young person that has a relationship, right? The, the SSA's involvement, or school staff calling an SSA outside of a, an, an, an incident that may cause sort of harm to the school community, it is, it is not something that we want our staff to do. We want them to continue to focus on the utilization of the existing supports that we constantly train them on and utilize those first and foremost.
Thank you. When was the, when was the code last updated, the disciplinary?
2019.
2019, okay, thank you. So back to NYPD, thank you very much. What specific measures are in place for gang prevention and intervention in, within schools?
We have different, within the police department, we have different community outreach, community affairs units that will go out and let everyone know, from students to teachers, they ask us to come in and talk about different things going on in school. I just took over in July. Anything outreach regards to kids, I want to make sure that we are out there touching them.
So as a follow-up, can you explain the roles and responsibility that crisis management system providers and, brought in a school environment, and how they contribute to enhancing school safety and response to the crisis? I think it's a question for both sides.
So yeah, we wanna, I'm gonna call Erin Barnett up to talk to the work around the crisis management systems. These are folks that he works with directly as overseeing the Project Pivot Initiative. But these crisis, crisis, Mary, crisis management systems, right? You're talking about the CBOs and the communities-
CMS.
That are providing the services. That is Erin Barnett, to respond to the question. Working in lockstep with these organizations that represent the very communities that they serve. It is an added layer of support for our young people as they transition to and from school safely. And these are people in the community who know the community well. But Erin, the relationship with CMS.
Oh, excuse me. Right. Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Yes, as Chief Rampant mentioned, we work with a number of CMS organizations that provide safe passage support, as well as conflict mediation support at approximately 170 of our schools. They offer up to 15 hours per month in either or of those services. And so we work closely with them to ensure that, you know, our students have the support that they need to ensure their safety to and from school, as well as mitigate some of those issues that do arise in schools that lead to the conflict that we often might see after school.
Thank you for that, but I also do want NYPD to, to talk about, is there any integration and, and partnership with the CMS along with the DOE? Because we need all of this to work, everyone to be speaking to one another. So do you have any comments about the role that NYPD, any partnerships that you have with the current CMS? I know in Staten Island, all three agencies, all three of them work very closely together, so can you just-
I mean, I can still tell you, just grabbing, I know I've, I've been told that Staten Island has a great hold on us, and we can model that throughout the whole five boroughs.
Good stuff.
Then we'll do such, we'll do such. Just give me time, I just got the job. I will make sure we make this place great, 100%.
Good, so we're gonna get you nice and ready by asking all these questions that you'll get back to us with some really great answers.
Yes, yes, of course.
So I wanna move over to the school safety budget. How many school safety agents are, are employed currently?
We have approximately 3,930. We're always looking to hire more.
What is the annual budget allocated for school safety agents and their operations in schools?
I'm gonna let the assistant commissioner answer that one.
The current budgeted authorized headcount is 4,231. The fiscal 24 budget for school safety is 235 million. With OTPS, our expenses to run the operations, 4.9 million.
Thank you. Can you provide an overview of the current salary structure for school safety agents within NYPD School Safety Division?
I actually just have the revised salary that was recently approved under collective bargaining. The salary for a Level 1 agent goes from 34, 834, to the new salary of 36,955. The top pay is reduced from seven years down to five years. I don't have the breakout of years two to five, but it has been decreased from top pay of seven years down to five.
We don't have the steps, but bottom line, obviously, we, we definitely know our agents definitely need more.
100%. What opportunities for salary advancements or promotions exist for school safety agents?
So the first line of promotion for a school safety agent is to become a Level 3. That's an internal promotion, something that we've worked with DCAS to issue an exam for that particular level. That's still in the works. After a Level 3, that's a civil service exam for supervisor of school security. That is our triple S. After that level, it goes to associate supervisor, school security, Level 1. Those are usually deemed the executive officers within a borough command. And there's a promotional opportunity to Level 2 for various other roles, such as the commanding officer of that borough command.
Thank you very much. I was listening to, in regards to your, your opening statement. One question that I have is, according to the data provided by NYPD, children as young as six years old have been handcuffed while experiencing a mental health crisis. How does the department protocols address the use of handcuffs for children in crisis? And how could this policy align with the handcuffing of such children? Can you talk a little bit about that?
One second, I'm sorry. Bottom line, from my- So, we use minimum amount, but bottom line, from my, I just took over, and I wanted to let you clearly understand that there is no good scenario where a six-year-old, five-year-old, to be restrained. There has to be other ways out there to look at this, but very clear that minimum amount is being used. We should be the last resort at any time to ask a step in. NYPD is the last resort, and should always be the last resort in regards to any child being restrained.
Thank you so much. We'll be looking at those reports closely to make sure that that is the case. So Chair, may I ask two more questions? Is that okay?
Sure, and then pass it along to Speaker Ayala.
These are-
Speaker.
In the realm of restorative justice, what amount of funding does NYPD receive from DOE for restorative justice programming? And please provide some funding amounts for the past school year as well as this school year.
We actually do not receive funding for restorative justice.
Pardon me, I apologize. Sorry, thank you for your, your answers. I'll pass it back to Chair Joseph. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Hanks. Deputy Speaker?
I think I have more questions now than I started with, but, you know, quite frankly, I, I wanna, I wanna tell you that, you know, I have four children, and my first child was a doozy. He was a hot mess. And I was a teenager trying to learn, you know, to take care of a child that had obvious, you know, emotional health issues. And I remember one time, he was not behaving in the hallway, and there was a police officer in my building for some reason. And I remember telling him, "You need to, you need to behave. The police is there." And that police officer looked at me, and he said, "Why did you do that?" And I said, "Well, what did I do?" He says, "You should not use the police as a means of scaring your child, because if, God forbid, that child gets lost in the street, I am the last person that he's gonna ever want to come to." And that really resonated with me. It did. It's to this day, my son is 33 years old, and it's still ingrained in my, in my mind that that is not the way, right? But this is kind of like the same scenario, where we're utilizing police officers to keep children in line, young children, that maybe just be having a bad day, that maybe are going through things at home, that for whatever reason that day, they just weren't feeling their best self. And, and, and it bothers me that as a city, we put in so, so many resources towards policing our way around these issues, and then fight for every single dollar to put in preventive services, to avoid these things from happening, right? Social emotional health is a really big deal and should be addressed by social workers, people that are trained to do this, right? And so I don't know if this is so much of an issue that, I'm trying to figure out, like, what the source of the problem here is. Is it that the DOE is violating and abusing their right to call 911 when they shouldn't be? Or the response, once the NYPD or even the school safety agent addresses the child, is, is, is a little bit too drastic for my taste? Because quite frankly, if my child, this hot mess of a child at home, was behaving inappropriately, and he was all of the time, and I restrained him, I would probably, you know, somebody would be calling ACS on me, or I would be subject to some level of investigating, right? And so I expect that we can kind of, where we can figure this out in a way that it better meets the, the needs of our children specifically. Because if we look around at the number of black and brown people that are leading these agencies, all of us, you included, have a responsibility to fix this, because it is our kids, black and brown kids that are getting arrested, who are learning from the age of five that they're already on somebody's radar. What message does that send to them? These are young boys primarily that are growing up in our system from the age of five in the space that they should be felt, that they should feel the safest. And I have teenagers, I can tell you, you know, sometimes as elected officials, you know, we take, where, you know, everything is either black or white, and there's a lot of gray. There is a lot of gray. And I know that in high, you know, like, my, my kids in high schools, there was a completely different vibe. There was a lot of other things that were happening that could also have been addressed, but I could see where there was, there was a, a line that was crossed, right? For whatever reason, and I think that the, the type of way that we address that should be differently, different. But there is no justification in my mind. There's nothing that anybody can tell me that would be rationalized, using restraints on a, on a five-year-old, on a six-year-old. And then when I see the numbers, we are largely represented in that category. Why? These are our babies. These are kids that are already, you know, maybe suffering from, you know, things at home, food insecurity, housing insecurity, domestic violence, mental health issues, substance use. And then on top of it, they get to us, and we add to that, as, instead of trying to figure out a better alternative. So there's absolutely no way. And I know, I, I just, I really wanted to kind of get a sense from, from you about how, I mean, you mentioned in your testimony that, that the bill would, would prevent you from addressing, you know, issues in a time-sensitive way in, in situations that may be potentially dangerous. Could you elaborate on that so that I better, I have a better understanding of what, you know, a scenario where that would be the case? Where you would, and I, and I would ask that the example be, you know, for the category of children. And I, and again, I'm, I'm here to advocate for all of the students, but I'm primarily peeved at the idea of five and six-year-olds. So I need to understand what scenario would justify that, and how I prevent that by passing this bill.
So, we agree with the spirit of this bill, and in fact, our patrol guide speaks to a, a structure that our school safety agents and officers must follow before responding to, or when responding to, a student in a school. Putting this, putting an inflexible checklist into a law does not, it does not help the school safety agents or the, not help the school safety agents or the officers to achieve the goals of keeping everybody in that school safe. While we do understand that, that restraints need to be used all the- they, they are instructed to confer with school administration. They are instructed to confer with the crisis intervention teams. And, and when officers respond, they're also instructed to confer with the school safety agents before going in and responding. But not every situation allows for an officer or a school safety agent to call a parent, to speak to the administrator. If there is a, a violent situation going on where faculty or other students, or that student themselves is in a situation where they can be harmed, then an officer needs to have the flexibility and discretion and tools at their disposal to respond to that situation appropriately.
Well, I, I believe that the first call should be to a social worker, not to 911. And I will, you know, continue to say that. And again, I know that there's a lot of nuance, you know, in this conversation. I recognize that as a parent of children that, you know, have gone through every stage. So I do see that, and, and I don't intend to be inflexible, but if you're stating in your testimony that a lot of this is already covered under your own policy guide, and this would just be codifying it into law, then I don't understand the objection.
The NYPD understands the gravity, the sensitivity of placing a child into restraints. So it's not like it's being laws. We just make sure that, looking at our patrol guide, is something maybe we can look at again and take another fresh look at as well.
Okay.
But I don't think that we should put into law and restrict our officers to do such in regards to emergency and wait for an emergency to happen.
Do you know what the percentage of, what, of the average age of students that are being restrained is?
Do we have that? I'm sorry, we'll go back to you if that's the case.
Can you also share what the average race of each child is? Because we've been doing a lot of work with this, and I wanna, you know, really shout out advocates for children who have been phenomenal throughout this process I don't know. And, you know, we've been having this conversation for several years now, and it, it doesn't seem like the number of incidents has been reduced, but rather, it seems like we've, we continue to grow that population. And again, I'm gonna just leave it as, I expect more from this administration, because this administration looks like us. And I expect that we know better and are look- and are looking to make situations that our kids have been subject to, that we were subject to growing up, less of a burden for the next generation. And we do not do that by policing our way around it. There is a place for the police. There is a place for school safety agents, wherever that may be. But we cannot continue to police children in this way, especially children that are in emotional distress. So I will leave it at that, but I hope to get that information back, because I think that that'll, you know, that data is important.
No, let me just jump in with this part, too. You said it happens a lot, and more times, I want to put out there that restraints on children has actually gone down 29% since 2019. It's gone down, the restraint, the restraints.
But the number of children...
I'm sorry.
Even though, yeah, and so I can, I mean, and we can go back and forth on the numbers, but the percentage of young people, specifically Black boys that are being restrained is far greater than the percentage that they make up in a specific school building. And that's very telling.
We'll make sure to pull up the information and get you that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to take a quick moment to acknowledge Councilmember Nurse, Councilmember Gennaro, Aviles, Wrestler, Neely. Thank you. Just want to do a quick follow-up. Regarding to restraints, do you know of any best practices in other jurisdictions or other major cities using restraints on children?
I can't answer that. I could look into it, but I can't answer it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Caban.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask as much as you can to be brief and direct with your answers, because I got a lot of questions and not a lot of time. Would you commit to giving this council copies of the patrol guide sections related to responding to students in schools, particularly the ones that you mentioned in your testimony, section 215-17, and I think 215-15?
Yes, 215-13, 215-17. I'll make sure that we get that, provide that to you.
Great, thank you.
They're also publicly available online.
Okay, thank you. Now, I want to go back to something that Deputy Speaker Ayala pointed out. Trauma often manifests as learning difficulties and behavioral problems. And so I think that one of the goals should be to get to the source of trauma. And to be clear, when we have an entire ecosystem for safety, especially in our schools, violence interruption is, and prevention is part of that, but it's not the same thing. They are part of the ecosystem, but they're not synonymous with restorative practices. Just like the restorative justice circles are part of the system, but they're not synonymous with restorative practices, which are more expansive. And that's what I want to ask y'all about. Are, from the education end, are y'all familiar with the CBITS and DBT modalities? Okay. So just for the record, that was a no. So CBITS is cognitive behavioral intervention for trauma in schools. It's something that's being used, again, in school districts across the country that have moved away from using school-based policing. And it's a modality that's for reducing symptoms related to existing traumatic experiences and enhancing skills to handle future stresses. So it's designed to be delivered by school mental health clinicians, not police. And then DBT, dialectical behavior therapy. It's about accepting negative emotions, feeling them, and then learning how to release them. Those are all restorative practices in the school that everybody is bought into, from staff level to clinicians, that really takes away and reduces the number of instances that escalate to the point of like a more serious intervention, and really should be the holistic approach that we are leaning into. You know, we've seen the statistics. Diversity amongst our SSAs doesn't, isn't changing the outcomes. And so what that tells me is that it is the wrong job in the school, and that what we require is job creation and expansion, especially for folks who are in those roles. It's well-suited to have different tools, different training, different roles to provide safety in our school. So I would encourage y'all to look at some of these modalities, like CBITS, like DBT. And then I quickly want to move into a couple of questions in another area. So this is sort of about police, the Police Foundation. Some SSAs are being referred to as options SSAs. What does that mean exactly?
I've never heard of the term option SSAs.
Nobody's heard of that term? Okay. How is the DOE involved in Police Foundation wellness centers, like the one inside of a high school? How was the DOE involved in Police Foundation wellness centers, like the one inside of a high school?
Well, we collaborate all the time, but you want to talk about that?
Well, if we're referring to a program in the law enforcement high school, is that what you're referring to?
No, there's the Police Foundation, right? And the DOE does some partnership or collaboration with the Police Foundation, correct?
There may be a direct relationship between the law enforcement high school and the NYPD.
I believe you're referring to the options program. That's the collaboration between police officers, agents, DOE personnel, and it's actually located in law enforcement high school. But that's something that the chancellor and everything else agree.
Yeah, this is an initiative that the principal requested to work in collaboration with the NYPD, since the name of the school is Law Enforcement High School, wanted a better relationship with the NYPD. During a visit last school year, the principal approached the then-police commissioner and asked for a greater relationship between the two. So they have continued those conversations. And I believe that sort of brought this partnership to fruition.
It's an excellent program.
So is it only in that one law enforcement school, or is it throughout the city?
Throughout the city, different parts. But financial literacy, they have everything on that side, from emotional intelligence, they reach out to the kids and have the kids participate in that.
And that's through the Police Foundation doing that?
That's in collaboration with the Police Foundation, yes.
Okay.
Great partners.
May I just ask one more follow-up question? Thank you. The new SSA recruitment program rolling out, that was in the news, I think, it was in AM New York, the NYPD is going to be additionally recruiting students inside of their schools? And how long has the DOE been involved in that?
From day one, the DOE's been involved. They were in lockstep with them. And we're looking to hire kids, young people, young people, young adults from the age of 18 to 20. We were looking to make sure that we have a pipeline from, like you said, from high school to incarceration. We want to make sure we have a pipeline to us, if that's possible, and give young people a job. There will be assistant agents within our schools, our PS schools, to assist our agents and go on to further their career.
I thank you for the answers. I personally would welcome more pipelines to other careers outside of the NYPD, but thank you.
That's what I got.
So you got, okay, great. Thank you so much. I want to piggyback off of an earlier question. What training and resources do NYPD offer to de-escalate situations involving students in emotional crisis?
I'm sorry, repeat that again?
What training and resources do NYPD officers receive to de-escalate a situation involving students in emotional distress?
The DOE actually offers a 10-day course within the Police Academy. You guys want to...
10 days and not ongoing?
Obviously, we do refreshers and things of that nature, but I want to make sure that the 10-day...
Teachers are required to do PD. I think you guys should be doing PD constantly, because times are changing, things are changing. Children's have changed.
I agree 100%. I want to make sure that we get the best training that is available to us, and I will make sure that our school safety agents are best to...
They should also be getting that training as well, because they're interacting with young people every single day, so that training is important.
Yes, as well as our police officers and our agents, and that's something we can definitely look into.
New York City Public Schools was gonna answer. How many incidents of restraint using students, used on students in emotional crisis in public schools have there been since 2022 and 2023, and this school year to date?
We have a decrease of 25% from 2019, 18 to 2019, to 2023. And the numbers are 304 versus 228.
Why, what are the differences in the numbers?
I'm sorry?
Why are we seeing an uptick?
No, we have a decrease.
You have a decrease from this year, from this school year?
Yes.
You had, schools closed for a while. No, you saw...
Excuse me. From 2019 to 2022, there is a decrease.
Right? Because there was no school. Schools closed. How about now that schools are open from closure? Go ahead, ma'am.
So this is the, we're using the first pre-pandemic year versus 2022 to 2023. I mean, this school year is only a month and a half in, but there has been a 25% decrease in the number of restraints used on a child in crisis from pre-pandemic year 1819 to full year, full school year 2022, 2023.
Quick question for you. We talked about suicide earlier. SSAs know to tell students to call 988 in case they're in trouble? I don't know what 988 is. Mark, you gotta train them.
I'm sorry, nine what?
Suicide prevention line. For young people, this was a bill that was passed by the council. It's in every New York City school. Thank you.
And yeah, so part of it, we are doing training for the recruits, and part of the training is talking about suicide prevention and intervention. We review the chancellor's regulations and also do professional development around it. So yes, there are conversations. They do receive resources. That's one piece. And then the other piece is for our DOE, because of the bill that was passed, every single school in New York City has to have a suicide prevention poster. That poster is posted in all of our schools. Every school has a suicide prevention liaison. That poster also has 988. We have annual trainings for the suicide prevention liaison. That, part of that responsibility for that liaison is to turn Keya Training Deck to the whole school community by October 31st. We also have a suicide prevention and intervention plan that is in our consolidated plan. While the consolidated plan is a living, breathing, live document, it can be updated at any time, it has to be reviewed and checked off by the principal and superintendent's team by October 31st of every year. So yes, that's out there. And working with our school mental health partners.
And if I could add, so all of that was pedagogical. Cognitive behavior therapy is therapeutic and not pedagogical. And so our mental health providers, they can do that based on student need, and it's not for every student everywhere. And so it's definitely clinical, which is the difference.
Thank you for stating that on the record. Councilmember Stevens.
Good afternoon. So I have a couple of questions. And just before I get started, I just wanted to point out, there was something said from the DOE side where they were saying that the crisis management team is always the first to intervene and all those things. But the reality is, if we were doing restorative justice correctly in our schools, anyone in the school building as an adult would be able to intervene, because that is how that practice works. So I just wanted to point out already, we're already failing, because we're not doing it correctly. Number two, I have a question, because one of the things I always like to point out is that the principal pretty much set the tone of how school safety is interacting with students, and what that looks like, and all those things. And working in schools for a number of years, I would see when principals and teachers would use school safety as behavior management. So a student got on my nerve, I'm calling school safety, they coming in, they get them out, and it's escalating, and now it's a whole incident. What are you guys doing to prevent that? And what is the repercussions for principals and teachers that are using SSAs as school, as behavior management? Because that's the conversation that no one ever wants to talk about. But it's a real thing, and it is happening, and how are you guys evaluating that?
Yeah, so that's super unfortunate. And if there are cases where you know directly where principals are...
It happens all the time. We have to stop pretending like it is not happening.
Again, if there are particular cases where you know a school where this is transpiring, you can definitely apprise us of that. We have different measures by which principals are addressed for utilizing those kinds of measures to address student discipline. I agree with you wholeheartedly when you say that restorative sort of prepares all adults to respond to young people in crisis, right? And our schools, I would venture to say that our schools are safe havens for our young people. And the caring adults that provide care to them are always available to them in the time of crisis. And if we're talking about, you know, just a principal who you see or know of, or others know of...
So who do they reach out to to actually report this? Because I'm sure there's enough people in here who knows that this is true, and this is happening. And so who should they report it to?
They can reach out directly to me.
So they should, everyone should call you directly?
Can call me directly.
Got it. So everybody heard that in here. He said, "Call him directly." For all the principals and the teachers who are using it as behavior management, because I've seen it with my own eyes, and it happens. And this is part of the problem, because they come in, and it now, an incident, because a student was having a bad day, because maybe they didn't want to take off their hat. Because I've been there. And that's one of the biggest issues. They didn't want to take off their hat, or they have a scarf on, and the teacher tells them, "Take it off." "You know what? I'm gonna call school safety." And now it's an incident, they're being thrown on the floor, they're being arrested. So if we don't talk about that piece of the problem, and don't start addressing that, all the other stuff kind of goes out the window. And so I just wanted to also point that piece out. The other thing is, I keep hearing about Project Pivot, but I am still unclear about what this program is. So before we even talk about what it is, what is the evaluation process? And how do we know that it's actually being successfully implemented? And what are the criteria and goals around it? Because every time I have a question, I get Project Pivot, and it has to stop. We gotta do this, guys.
Okay, Project Pivot is in a...
I just need to know the indications of success and what the valuation is.
Okay, well, the indicators of success and the milestones that we're tracking are increased attendance, we want decreased behavioral incidences with the students that are involved, and we're also looking for academic gains for the students that are involved. At every Project Pivot school, we are looking to enroll between 30 and 50 students for direct student, excuse me, for direct support in one of seven areas.
So with 30 students out of some of these schools that have maybe like 500 students, you're only gonna be working with 30 students, and those are the milestones? So I think that we need to really be thinking about how we redirecting this money, because that doesn't make sense to me. That just seems like, that doesn't, I'm sorry. Like, that sounds crazy. Like, there's a lot of money going into this, and this is one of the reasons why I keep saying I ask about Project Pivot every single time. And even with those indications of success, and you just said 30 students at each of these schools, that doesn't sound like success to me. So would love to talk off the record about it. We can talk more about it, but I think that we need to be thinking a little bit bigger and thinking about how to build that out a little bit more.
Well, just for clarity, it's a minimum of 30 students, up to 50. And the students that we are looking to engage in Project Pivot are often the ones who are overlooked for programmatic opportunities. These are the students that have displayed challenges during their time at their respective schools. And so Project Pivot is designed to engage specific students at every school. The allocations that we gave to every school is enough to secure two partners to, again, address the needs of this specific group. It really isn't designed to support all of the students in the school.
If we don't have programs at school that doesn't address every student, it's already a problem for me, because every student needs to have programming. And so I, I'm sorry, I have one more question. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry. So I, and that's why I'm going fast, because I'm trying to get through my lot of questions. And so this is to NYPD, because I heard you talk about YRT, which is the youth officers, and don't get me started on that, because I always hate youth officers, in the sense of like, we have social workers and county councils doing that stuff. So that's not your fault. That's my thing. I don't like it. But why aren't you guys working with CMS sites to do that? Because I heard you said you had NYPD, school safety. Those were the two, those were the two groups that were gonna be out there doing like dismissals and doing all that stuff? Because then, when we think about Project Pivot, why is that not part of that process and plan? And how are we using crisis management to do all those things? Because I think part of it is, we should be preventing crimes, right? And so that's not what you guys are gonna be doing. And so if you're the only ones out there, how are we doing the preventative work? Because I'm not saying you shouldn't be out there, but how are we doing the preventative work? And if we're not using these folks on this side who's doing the Project Pivot, the crisis management stuff, it seems very disjointed.
I'm in charge to make sure that all our kids are safe to and from school and within that school. So the youth response team, we can't be everywhere, but are deployed into those major, major area hubs to keep the kids safe.
Wouldn't it make sense for us to work with the CMS sites who should be everywhere?
I'm welcome to work with anyone that wants to work with us.
But this is the administration. This is, y'all should be working together, no?
Yes, yes.
So then that's what we should be doing. That's the route we should be going to.
So some of the areas that we cover, they're not covering, and vice versa, just so we can spread our stuff out.
Part of the problem. I just want to say, if we have all of these programs, I think we need to be thinking about how are we collaborating? CMS folks are the incredible messengers. They're the folks in the community. They should be the people that the young people know, who will be most familiar with. Like, so they should be there, too, so when those incidents happen, they can also intervene. So saying like, oh, so we can spread it out, if we were actually working smart and working collaboratively, it would make your life and job easier. Because if I see a person I know I'm having a fight, I'm not gonna go to y'all, because, once again... Because once again, the deputy speaker already said it, we've criminalized police officers, so they are not part of the answer. They're part of the problem because kids don't want to talk to them. So how are we integrating CMS into this work? Because that's part of the piece that's missing.
Well, that's one of the things too. We want to change that image as well to make sure that people do, and kids, young people do want to come to the police department and hang out with us and be friends. And I want my officers and agents to know the kids by name because that's exactly how I grew up. I grew up in St. Mary's Houses over in the South Bronx. And make no mistake about it, I knew the officer by name. I felt comfortable to and from. That's the reason why I'm sitting here today is because there was an officer that made me and my mom and our three sisters feel comfortable and feel safe.
So then NYPD needs to do the real work and stop doing superficial stuff like doing basketball games. And actually do the real work and think about the trauma that is causing these communities that make people feel unsafe and don't want to come to you. So if you really want that to happen, then we need to actually start having conversations about doing the real work and the healing in the community.
I am welcome to have any conversation with us. Thank you.
Absolutely. I'm here. Everybody know. Find me. I'll, I'll set up family with you.
I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Stevens. I just want to really do a little backup on Project Pivot. It was extended this year from one forty-four to two hundred schools. What are the data metrics used to determine the success of this program that led to the, to the expansion? And how is Project Pivot different than what is currently being offered as part of community schools, which have data to support that success?
Okay, uh, so for year one of Project Pivot, schools were identified based upon a number of safety factors. We looked at level four and five infractions, weapons confiscated, uh, acts of group violence. We also looked at some social determinants, students that are overage, undercredited, students in temporary housing. We really wanted to lean in, in the high school space on campuses in an effort to unite the culture um, on those campuses that often have multiple schools. So that really comprised the one hundred and forty-four. As we expanded, we wanted to align our expansion with City Hall's Gun Violence Task Force Prevention Plan, which really focuses on six precinct areas. And so we really leaned in on the elementary and middle school space during year two and really looked to expand in those particular areas.
And is there any partnership, as Councilmember Stevens was saying, with community schools that have been doing that work and has data to drive that kind of work?
Yeah, well, there are a number of community schools that are also part of Project Pivot. But I think the major difference with Project Pivot and community schools is Project Pivot really looks to engage those grassroots, community-based organizations, many of which are located in the neighborhoods that our, our program sites exist. And so I think with that shared lived experience that these vendors can provide for the students, I think that's what really makes Project Pivot a little bit different than community school support.
Okay, um, but some of these, um, CBOs are grassroots. They are in the community. They know. So how mu- so how, how are we not partnering up with them and some of these services overlap?
No, again, so Project Pivot is designed for every school to engage the community-based organization of their choice. There are some community schools that are part of the Project Pivot initiative. And so it is totally left up to the school what partner they would wish to engage. We, we, uh, we serve as thought partners with the schools, but we do not make the selection for them. We certainly welcome the schools to engage a CBO that is the best fit for their students and their school community.
Okay, all right. I'm gonna come back. Um, do you believe quality after-school programs play a role in keeping our students safe? If so, are these programs at risk if schools aren't held harmless for this mid-year adjustment period?
So I absolutely believe that, um, after-school programs are important to the, they are, they are the fabric of our school communities. All right, after-school programs allow for our young people to have a place to go after school, right? Um, for those who in some cases go alone or stay on the street. I hundred percent agree. It's important to have after-school programs and they've been beneficial in helping to reduce safety and violent incidents um, occurring in the neighborhoods where young people reside. As it relates to, um, budgetary constraints or talks about, I mean, I am not the person for that. So I appreciate you sliding that in there, but, um, yeah.
I have, I have a question. Nine-one-one calls are made this year due to students experiencing mental health, correct? Episodes in school, how often do you call or use mental health continuum that the council paid for and invest in a lot of money using the three agencies, H and H, DOMH, and New York City Public Schools? How often is that service used versus calling nine-one-one when a child is having an emotional?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, uh, Mary Shammon to answer that question. She's our Director of Crisis.
Put on your mic, please.
So the nine-one-one call for
How many did you get this year from schools?
We don't, I don't
NYPD, can you answer that?
I don't, we don't have that information.
Would you work hand in hand?
We'll get back to you with the numbers on our side.
I will be writing for the numbers as well. Go ahead, ma'am. Whoever's gonna answer my question, how is mental health continuum? This is something the council, we fought hard and heavy to make sure that's in the school buildings.
So Office of School Mental Health, excuse me, I apologize. So the Office of School Mental Health, um, has partnered with New York City DOE, New York City Public Schools, as well as, um, HMA, Health Mental Hygiene. And they have used the model where they have incorporated mental systems into school with CBO partnerships that allow us to provide equitable assets, access and sustainable services, three tiers, right? To avoid the nine-one-one calls. So universal, selective and targeted. So currently, we've worked hard to have quality mental health services and programs available in our schools. Three hundred and thirty-one schools have access to mental health clinics, serving over a hundred and seventy thousand students. Three hundred and thirty three schools have access to mental health services via school-based health centers, primary clear clinics, serving a hundred and fifty thousand students. We partner with New York Office of Mental Health to establish a hundred additional school-based mental health clinics.
How often, how long does a student have to wait to see a professional?
Well, if they're housed, so that's the benefit of what you provided us, right? So if, once they're housed within the school, we walk them over, we get permission from the parents and they can be seen right on the school site. The other piece is that these clinics also have, um, I'm forgetting what they're called, but they're called, um, it's crisis sites, um, where students can also go to right away, even if they're not in school, if it's happening after school, while they're at home, because they are our satellite sites, so that students can go there. Um, the continuum is in, um, select schools. It's in, um, fifty-two schools with CBO presence on site. So that's the continuum.
Is that borough-wide? Because my colleague would ask, is this borough-wide, including Staten Island?
I'm, 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 I'm gonna lean on the, uh-huh, yes, ma'am.
I'm asking for her.
We have those numbers for you if you want it. Uh, the NYPD was called two thousand eight hundred and forty times for this school year, for twenty twenty, excuse me, for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
Can you repeat that for my colleague, please, for Chair Hanks?
That's two thousand eight hundred and forty for a school year, twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, school year. That's correct, citywide.
Have you seen increases in hate-driven bullying in schools since the start of the latest Middle East conflict? What steps are being taken to make sure staff and students are being sa- are safe?
We'll have to get back to you on that.
Oh, wow. Okay. All right. Councilmember Gutierrez. Oh, I have another quick question. Can you talk to us about the bulletproof vests for the SSA agents?
Yes, yes. Long overdue.
You sounded, you sounded a long
Long overdue to keep our people safe, yes. Um, they have, uh, school safety equipped with the lightest vest, the light vest that they can wear to protect themselves. It's a three sixty-two. It can actually, uh, stop a knife as well as a, a round.
And how much did that cost?
I'll ask the Assistant Commissioner. He's the money guy.
Funding in the amount of two-point-eight million dollar was provided to equip all safety agents with a vest.
How many safety agents have been shot, shot or stabbed? So that, so we can make that type of investment. Go ahead.
Investment in regards to having our people safe, there's not, there's not enough money.
No, we're just, it's an investment, right? Don't turn on us. It's, it's an investment, so we're asking.
We'll give you the injured part, how many people have been injured. Thank God we had no one that's been shot.
So how much are you spending to spend the locking door systems? How much are you spending?
Uh, we'll pivot to our New York City Public School System, uh, to answer that question. Seventy-eight million?
Forty-three million.
Forty-three million, a little louder for the, for on the record.
Forty-three.
Metal detectors? Why, why everybody look surprised?
We'll get back to you on the metal detectors.
You'll be getting a letter as well. I will be sending a follow-up letter. After every hearing, you get a follow-up and I expect the questions to be answered, so I can enter them on the record.
Hundred percent.
Security cameras?
The security cameras are part of a capital project, which is a, a, a five-year capital project. I think the last capital was about two hundred, two hundred million for a five-year capital project. We'll get you to specifics on how much of that capital project funding was spent on IPDVS. Right? Because it's, it's a variety of different things, but we'll get you specifics as it relates to the IBD, IPDVS system in schools.
Training and overtime for SSAs in
Are you asking for how much, question?
Yes, that's the same line of question, sir.
The overtime, um, budget for this year is forty million dollars in overtime.
And training?
Training is also incorporated within that, within that salary budget.
Chair Hanks has a question for you.
Thank you. Um, just to follow up, when, when you were talking about the, um, number of nine-one-one calls were in over two thousand, uh, do you have any, uh, reporting on what schools that they're, not so much what schools they're coming from, but is it middle school, is it high school? Do we have the breakdown of what type of calls? You know, um, the demographic? Do we have any of that information readily available? I would love to have that if you don't. I would love, that would be my follow-up.
One second.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I am going to ask a couple of questions related to, to both testimonies. So hoping, hoping that you all can expand. So my first set of questions is for Inspector Taylor. Um, can you speak a little bit more on the Safer Watch app? Um, I know from the, your testimony, this is something that's just now being piloted in five schools, correct? Is this an app that is, it used only on phones? And can you expand a little bit on the ability for people outside of the school to utilize this app?
The most people, the more people that use their app will keep our people safe. Um, it's a pilot program. We have it in Stuyvesant, Hillcrest, uh, Bronx Science, uh, Brooklyn Tech and PS seventy-eight and Staten Island. Staten Island.
Thanks for mentioning.
That being said, it's on all of our school safety agent's cell phones. So it's a panic button as well. So if that's the case, it's a three sixty-two where if, if, if there was a major incident in that school, time-sensitive. I had the chance to go to Parkland and visit that crime scene there where New York City, we can't afford to get it wrong. We have to be right a hundred percent in regards to any kind of active shooter, anything that takes place in New York City. So the app is one of those things that time is on our side in regards to that. And if we can get that information out quickly as possible.
Sure. And so, and students inside the building are also encouraged to use this app if they need?
The administration as well as students, anyone can use that app in regards to that, once it's established within the school system.
So, but you know, there are many schools that ban cell phones. So that's why is the app only available, accessible through a cell phone app? Is it something that is in their laptops?
We realize our young people keep their cell phones in their hands. It's one of those things that, um, you can download this and actually use it from that point on.
I don't think that's a good policy. You're just like banking on a, they're, they're gonna sneak it in anyway. What is the, no, seriously, what is the, in those instances where students have that cell phone banned? It does happen. It happens in schools in my district, right? And we're seeing that more and more nationally where they're not allowed to bring in their schools. They, you know, they hand, they submit their cell phones. So I'm only asking because I've seen this administration move forward with a number of like these new apps. Um, and there's a lot of holes missing. And we have a concern for the availability and the accessibility of these apps. So that's why I'm asking, is the expectation that it's primarily for your school safety agents, you can say yes or no? And can you expand a little bit more on people outside of the school having access to this app?
Okay, for right now, we rolled it out a hundred percent through all of our school safety agents. The expansion to have it, with everyone to have it, yes. The more people to have it will keep people safe. That's the short answer.
But you say that just be- because they can push a button. It's like, it's like a quick thing?
Yes. You have to hold it down, let people know that there's a problem going on inside the school. So let's say if you're away from the school, you can't press the button. You can press the button, you can just only give out information like a tip. You can actually give information in regards to a tip. And that tip could lead to, oh, John is the one that keeps on calling the, um, um, fire drills that where the fire department's responding. And we get those constant calls where it's a fake call and it's around school time, it's around test time. They actually put in a fake call saying that, hey, there's something going on. So a young person can actually use that information, look at that tip, use it as a tip line or actually use it if it's inside of a school, in that school, hit that panic button and have emergency response.
And who's on the other side of this?
NYPD.
In the school or, or the, the central, uh, like
So when you hit that button, it's gonna go to our command center.
To the command center?
Yes.
This is the one in Queens?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then the ability for people outside of the school to use this app?
When you say the ability to people outside of the school.
So I thought, I write, I understood in your testimony
Yes, I mean, I, obviously, I would like, if we can move it out to anyone and everyone, it's possible.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting that you do. I have concerns with people that are not in the school building trying to police and trying to like raise concern.
So bottom line, they can't do it from outside the school.
I'm discouraging that.
You have to be part of that school community to hit the alarm, to let people show up. If it's bottom line, if you're outside that school, it just becomes into a actual tip.
Okay.
So you can just, information gives us a tip.
And your school safety agents are using, using this app on their phones that is provided by the PD with its own internet?
Yes.
Okay. Because, you know, if they have to depend on school internet to use it, I'm concerned.
Yes, and kids can report bullying and things of that nature, anything that comes up.
Okay, I want to fast forward to just like towards the end of your testimony, the youth respond team, um, this collaboration. Sorry, can I ask one more question? Taking forever to answer. Um, this collaboration with the youth response team and PD to, to travel with students to and from school?
When you say travel, we're not wanting to say
You said, it is in your testimony. What, you tell me what you mean by, I'm curious. What is this? Is this a chaperone? I don't know what this is.
This is to make sure our kids are safe. So if you have a kid that's going to and from school, we want to make sure that they're safe. So if that's going towards a local bodega, if that's by the pizza shop, we want to make sure that the kids get to school safely. And that's along the corridors. That's, say again?
But this, I said, sure, but these are not school safety agents, right?
These are school safety agents and police officers mixed together.
Okay.
It's the first time it's being done.
Okay, so, so more, more police officers?
So it's not just police officers without any school safety agents, and there is a supervisor with them at all times.
Okay, and the idea is for this collaborative
It's to make sure, it's to make sure that there are no, um, incidents where we catch any firearms, shootings and things of that nature in that area. And to make sure kids feel safe going to and from school.
And has, this has rolled out already?
It's already rolled out.
And how, how are you testing the success or efficacy of this program?
Um, anything that takes place in that area, we're looking at the data to make sure where they're, they're being, being deployed to. We're not taking any incidents in regards to firearms.
And, but this is not happening in every school district?
Uh, this is throughout the city, but do we have, um, our units in every location? No.
Yeah, it says here you have it in three boroughs. Okay, I, I will submit more questions. I can just, one more question to DOE because I have to uplift Councilmember Stevens and Chair Joseph on this like Project Pivot solution to all problems. Because I, I'm still unclear where the distinction is between Project Pivot and community schools. I, what, what sounds to me is that Project Pivot partners, partnering schools have the ability to choose the nonprofit, whereas community school partners have to submit an RFP and that's selected by the agency. That's really where I hear the, the distinction, which then my question would be, why not just allow community schools to do that process and select their own community group? Because again, they are grassroots. They are doing this work. And I was not clear in your response to Chair Joseph, uh, on the data available to, uh, prove the success of this program. How is Project Pivot specifically, how is the data from Project Pivot in the last year um, proving that this program is improving attendance, for example? And that's my last question.
Okay, so to answer the, the first question, so just to be clear, there are three tiers of supportive programming that we can, that we implement in schools. Project Pivot is a tier-three support, which is intended for a, 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 a group of students, small, that needs intensive, more intensive supports. You have tier-one supports, which are really more foundational for the entire school community. And tier-two is a little bit more focused, whereas I, as I mentioned, tier-three is more, uh, is more targeted towards, to support a, a, a particular group of students. And so that really is the difference between Project Pivot programming as well as community schools. And so I don't want to be overlooked the fact that there are community schools that are also part of Project Pivot. To answer your second question in terms of the impact, overall, in all schools across New York City, attendance was up, suspensions were down. And so when we looked at Project Pivot schools, we saw a similar pattern that again, at those particular schools, where we were able to provide funding so that schools could bring in supportive services for their students. Also, we saw an increase in attendance as well as a decrease in some of those behavioral incidences that do unfortunately arise. Now, let's also keep in mind that Project Pivot is in its infancy. We've only been in existence since last January. And so that runway between January and June, although we were happy at the impact that we saw, we are looking for even further gains this year, being that we are able to provide a full year of programming for the students at those respective schools.
So, but attendance is up citywide, is it possible that it would have gone up in these schools had Project Pivot not even existed, if that is the, the general trend?
I, I mean theoretically, I mean, you, you could certainly say that Project Pivot by itself is not the only answer. It is a part of the answer. And so a collaboration of all of the services that we provide our schools, I think, really makes the difference. And Project Pivot, as I mentioned, it really focuses on those tier-three students that need the more intensive supports.
So where is this data? Where's, where does this data live? See, when I was an educator, data drives my instruction. As a council member, drives my policy. So where's your data to support that attendance is up, suspensions are down? Where's your data to support that?
We, we certainly can provide that data for you. I unfortunately don't have the data.
Mr. Mark, I represent.
However.
Here we go. I sent the homework and the homework is not done. Ms. Joseph sent the homework and the homework is not done. The data was supposed to be provided to us. So now I'm gonna have to wait. So next time you come to my hearing, please come prepared. Thank you. Councilmember Russell.
Thank you so much, Chair Joseph and Chair Hanks, for convening this critical hearing. I want to just echo the sentiments from Councilmembers Stevens and Gutierrez. And, but I'm gonna focus my comments today and questions today on some local issues in our district rather than citywide policy, although I do have some serious concerns on citywide policy. So just, it's good to see familiar faces on the dais. Thank you for the work that you're doing. Mark, we've had a number of conversations now going over on six months. And, and you've been clear that you've been concerned about safety conditions in downtown Brooklyn, where we have nine different high schools in a very tight geographic area. You know, thirteen months ago, Unique Smith was shot and killed in McLaughlin Park on Tillery Street. We had another very serious stabbing incident last year right there as well. We have far too many fights break out, far too many issues among students between schools. We've been trying to piece together a plan with elite learners, with a CMS provider who can help provide safe passage for students across the downtown Brooklyn community and also help with some conflict mediation issues. Can you just speak to your commitment to that plan and to our efforts to try to bring in an outside provider to help mitigate the violent issues? And I think the safety concerns that students feel in downtown Brooklyn?
So Councilor Russell, first, first of all, I appreciate your advocacy for the schools in the downtown Brooklyn area, right? We continue to advocate for all schools. You are a hundred percent, you're a hundred percent correct in all of the data that you just provided regarding incidents of young people who are engaging in serious at-risk behavior. Thus, taking the lives of other young people. Far too often, I'm on the phone with yourself and other members, talking about the senseless, this senseless level of violence that is being administered throughout our city. And we are definitely concerned and become increasingly concerned. As it relates to a commitment to provide to one individual vendor, I will not do that on, on the record or off. What I will commit to is continuing to work with council to find a solution that best fits that downtown Brooklyn area and all of the respective areas that are seeing an uptick in incidents outside of school. I will also, I will also commit to working with our other external partners, right? Because it is a community responsibility for us to keep young people safe. What you are referring to is whilst young people are transitioning through the downtown Brooklyn area, violence is commencing, right? And while the Department of New York City Public Schools is responsible for the in-school, right? And they are responsible for community relations, it takes a full community in order to keep our young people safe. So I'm committed to working with you and the community to do.
I don't have any agenda for a specific provider, to be clear. I, I, what I care about is the leadership of the DOE. So let me actually take back for a second. For the last year since the tragedy involving Unique Smith, we've been convening principals, students, we had Director Tor, oh, how do I, help me out here?
Tor.
I tried, thank you. And many other leaders meet with our, our young people across the diversity of the downtown Brooklyn school community and try to develop solutions together. Because we can't just do this campus by campus, school by school. And so what I'm looking for is a leadership from DOE to commit to help bringing the schools together, to help collecting and pooling resources so that we can make an investment that can actually make a difference for safe passage across downtown Brooklyn, not just at the street corner on Adams, but across the community. And I'm not asking for you to commit to a provider, that's not the point of my statement. My ask is for you to commit to continue to bring the, the schools together and to encourage them to pool resources so that we can collectively work on solutions that don't just rely on the PD. We have two sectors of 84th Precinct Officers stationed in downtown Brooklyn for multiple hours every single school day. I don't think that's making our kids feel safe. And I don't think that that's the best solution for, and I don't think it's the best use of the time for the A4. I'd much rather be engaging with CMS provider who's, who's building relationships with our young people and helping to ensure safe passage for them.
Yep.
I just am looking for the commitment that you're gonna continue to help make sure that each of the schools are engaged and that we're committing and sharing and pooling resources together to try and ensure the safety of our young people.
We a hundred percent share in that commitment, right? Our, the safety of our young people are our top priority. Absolutely, we will continue to commit to, we do commit, continue to commit to working with the schools in the downtown Brooklyn area to come up with a solution that ensures safety and security for all of the students transitioning through downtown Brooklyn.
I think that we have an emerging model in downtown Brooklyn that is exciting. And I'm hopeful with your help and with Aaron's help and others, that we can get it implemented in the weeks ahead, not months. And that it's something that will make a difference in how safe our young people feel in the community. And is something that potentially is, is worthy of replication. And so I hope that we're able to make this happen and, and that it's a real success.
We're committed.
Appreciate it.
Councilmember Holden.
Thank you, Chairs, and thank you all for your testimony. Inspector Taylor, the Safer Watch app, you testified that it's in five schools, the, the app so far? And, and how's that working? And when are you going to roll it out completely system-wide?
So the pilot program has been very successful. We look to roll it out real soon. I don't have a timetable for you yet, but definitely look forward to having it out to citywide so everyone can benefit from having the safe school.
Can you give us an update on what it does and so forth and how it's going? How's the, the pilot program working?
So the, having a, like I was, having a panic button at your tip of your hand, giving it to our school safety agents, giving that extra layer of confidence that just in case something happens, that they have that information to put out to the world so it's no delay. Keyword is a delay. We want to make sure, the police department wants to make sure there is no delay in getting emergency critical information out. In regards to expanding it to the students and faculty and all, that availability is there already. It's who chooses to join that, that community. But we're in partnership with the DOE, bully, excuse me, the public schools. They have seen this as a benefit as well.
So, so it's, it's successful so far?
It's been very successful.
Any improvements, any suggestions on tweaking the app?
I would say there's no suggestion in regards to tweaking the app. I think I had, I thought I, I went to Florida, Parkland, and seeing it in real time, how they utilize this technology, and we have to embrace this technology within New York City. That is truly is a game changer, a game changer for us here in New York City, even if it's only in that pilot program at this time.
Yep. You know I'm a big supporter of our, our safety agents, our school safety agents do a magnificent job in my district.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
They know the students' names, they, they're actually like family. And I was amazed at that. And that's what I've been noticing for the last six years since I've been in the council. And that's what changed over the time when my kids went to school. My kids are fully grown, they have families, I have grandchildren. But there's a difference now that I'm seeing with the school safety agents, and I need more of them now. We, many of my schools, we only have one, and it's a larger school. So what I would like is obviously at least two in every school. Are, are we gonna get to that point at some point, you know, at some?
I truly believe that we will get to the point that we're gonna have two safety agents in all of our schools, a minimum. I want to keep that as our minimum of, of having two. Having that.
Do you, do you know when though? Because you, can you predict when? Because I've been trying, you know, I have a number of schools with one. And then, you know, somebody, a, a teacher has to come or an aide has to come.
And I clearly get this, when I say security, I don't think the DOE or the public school system should have to put someone down to cover us. I think we should have our agents there for those injuries. And I believe that our program can answer that in regards to having young people that are eighteen to twenty years of age in this program, getting young people to take the NYPD as a, as a, as their career, their career path. And having that, this first start, can you think about that? Having a young person at eighteen years of age graduate with a, a high school diploma or a GED and get offered a job at thirty-five, I would love to see it at forty-five or better. I'll work on that too, trying to get our money up for our agents.
Yeah, I just want to touch on that because I'm running out of time.
Yeah, got it.
Thirty-six thousand to start, I think it's thirty-six and change?
Yes.
That, that is the lowest in the nation. You know that.
I, I clearly get it.
It is. It's by far the lowest in the nation. And as we all know here, New York City is not an inexpensive place to live. So we're, we're really not doing justice to the people that are, have a lot of responsibilities. School safety agent, you're, you have tremendous, you have the, our children's lives in your hands and, and a responsibility. Paying them thirty-six thousand is an insult.
I truly get that. I would love to make sure that we can have that kind of conversation and make sure that there was a minimum of bringing that salary up. I believe that New York City NYPD as a whole, for our division, investing in technology, but more so in our personnel.
I just want, can I ask one more quick question? I want to ask just change on the suicide prevention. If, if I could, yeah, thanks. I just want to, I just want to get educated as to, because I, I think it was mentioned that there's some mental health clinics and we don't have, we have a, a few hundred in, in the schools. And you said that, I think, one, I think one person testified that, that the student has to go to the parent to get, to get seen. They just can't walk into a mental health facility? No. So let's say, in, in the way of suicide prevention, let's say a student is troubled and is thinking that there's no way they could, they could go on, what do they do? And they don't want to go to the parent, let's say. They don't want to talk to the parent.
Yeah, thank you for that question. But in our chancellor's regulations, A755, around suicide prevention and intervention, all confidentiality goes out the window. So we have to contact the parent or guardian, we have to make that connection.
Right, I understand, but let's say a teenager, it's a high school, and teenager, teenager's being bullied. And they want to talk to someone, someone at the school. They don't want to talk to the parent.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. What happens? Tell me what happened.
So they'll, they, teachers and, now teachers, and also school counselors and social workers and school-based mental health providers, they can provide support to students.
So they can walk right into?
Hundred percent.
Okay, so, but let's, let's talk one quick question about outreach. So, so does a counselor go to each school, you know, each class, let's say that, I don't know if they still have homeroom. They still have homeroom in the high schools?
Sometimes.
Okay, sometimes. Like, I would love if a counselor goes in periodically during the academic year that could talk about that. That there's, there is a way that we can, you know, if you, if you feel hopeless, things are hopeless, please come talk to us. Did, do they send that message out?
Yeah, thank you for that. Yeah, absolutely. And so much of the suicide prevention awareness and intervention relies on our SEL work. It's talking about coping skills, it's talking about relationship building and your awareness to yourself, right? So, yeah, we're having con, constant conversations around that. And we're amping up the way we support students in our school communities around suicide prevention and intervention.
Because the posters that you mentioned, I don't know if, I'd like to see one because, you know, if, if I can get a copy, a few copies. Thank you. Thanks so much, Chair. Thanks for the extra time.
And if I can just clarify the testimony, did not, and I'm sorry that you misunderstood, didn't say that the student had to go to the parent. If our students are being seen at our mental health clinics, we do have to get authorization from the parent, yes.
Yes, thank you so much, thank you.
Councilmember Vilas.
Thank you, Chairs. I'd like to know, I'd like to start with DOE. Do you know what the starting salary for paras are?
No, unfortunately, I do not know a starting salary for para, but we can.
Do you know what the starting salary for school social workers or counselors are? Or youth service workers that work with young people intensively?
School counselors?
We can get the base salary for you, but their salaries are also informed by their number of credits they have and also by some of the experiences they have. But we can definitely get the base salary for you.
Or parent coordinators. What I'm suggesting here is that if we're gonna talk about pay equity and we're gonna talk about safety in schools, we need to look about, look at all the workers that actually work with students every single day to keep them truly safe and learning. That is what the school environment is for. We would need to start in the building first with those if we're, if we want to look at safety for, for real. But let's go to the, I understand that the chancellor's regs, A1412, are being, are in the process of being amended. And this is the regulation around school, security in schools. My understanding is that what the amendments that are being proposed potentially are looking to circumvent parent and student rights and providing guidance to principals to contact general counsel first as opposed to parents. Is that correct?
So the regulation, we're definitely not looking to circumvent any young person's right. I mean, the, the primary obligation for our school administrators is to ensure full safety of our young people in schools, right? We are not looking to violate their rights in any way. The question around contacting counsel was around the question on whether or not a crime was committed. All right, and that's where the clarity is, right? In every case where we're meeting, anytime there's an incident involving a student, school staff is required to notify the parent. That's not gonna change.
So in the instance where there's a crime committed?
Principal doesn't know crime versus incident, right? They are focused on incidents. Where we're talking about a crime being committed, the NYPD may respond to the school. And principals are always told to, to reach out to legal counsel whenever there's that respective interaction.
And in every circumstance, a parent will be contacted first.
Anytime there's an incident involving a student, parent contact is required.
And are students informed of their rights in this process?
What students are, we do, in, in the discipline code, we have a section with students' overall bill of rights. When you talk about a respective incident where the NYPD is called, the school staff is there as local parentis, right? And their job is to make sure that in that time, the parent is contacted. So in terms of informing the student directly, right, that is just one of the steps that the school must follow.
Okay, great, because anything that would in fact. Okay, great, because anything that would in fact circumvent that, we would be deeply opposed to and, and very concerned. In all circumstances, parents should and must be contacted. All students must be given their rights in clear terms to understand what they're dealing with, so that they in fact are aware. So we look forward to, to seeing that that is in fact the case. In terms of Project Pivot, just very quickly, there's a huge, a huge increase obviously in the number of schools. I know, you thought you were going away, come back. Can you tell us how much money was given to each school and how that was determined?
Second. May I share with you the social worker's starting salary is 66,000.
And how many, oh, okay, let's, we're going to go back to that.
Oh, no. Sorry.
Yes, the, the cost that was allocated for every school, every school received $56,000. $49,000 was allocated to engage either one or multiple community partners of their choice. $5,000 was allocated to pay a staff member to serve as the school coordinator, and $2,000 was allocated to each school for an outing, educational outing or incentive for those students that are participating.
So the 56 is the top line number and it broke down in that way for each school?
Every school got the same allocation, yes.
Got it. In terms of, let's, let's go back to the, to the salary question. I was just confirmed paras, paras start at 25,927. I'm glad to hear that social workers are starting at, huh?
I don't, I don't know that that number is accurate.
I can't hear you. Oh, yeah. Oh, for sure. And they are doing all kinds of work in schools without question. It's important, it's important to understand that when we're talking about this and we're talking about safety, para pay equity is just as important as all the other, right? All the pieces of the puzzle. And so I just wanted to point that out. I lost my train of thought here, but I'm glad to, how many social workers do we have in the New York City schools right now?
We currently have 1,951 as reported to the in the city council report in February of '23.
And is any portion of this funding going to evaporate? Did any portion of that funds this 1,951 guidance counselors will evaporate with the federal money?
Are you firm for federal stimulus?
Yes.
Yeah, it is unfortunate that we are definitely facing some serious fiscal times ahead of us, as it relates to what programs and what areas we're cutting, that's still in, in conversation right now. As we know, and we've been sort of planning for, in our minds, we are facing this fiscal cliff, and as of next year, we are really going to have to buckle down and have real serious conversations around where, where the supports will come from and what programs will see the greatest impact as a result of this. But I can tell you, as an entire city, we really have to sort of gear up for what's coming our way.
Yeah, for sure. I mean, I think when we look at 1,900 social workers, 4,000 school safety officers with a commitment of continuing to add more, and we talk about wanting to keep students safe and on track, there is something clearly wrong with that equation. We seem, we seem to be able to find money to invest, invests when there have been no incidences, yet we cannot find money for resource off, for, for, excuse me, Freudian slip for sure, for social workers and for the intensive youth workers, that young people have been telling us ad nauseam over and over again that they need, that they need to be safe to address the issues that they are confronting. There is a problem here with our analysis, where we continue to invest in things that do not work and ignore the very young people we are saying we are here to protect. I don't understand it, and I, we absolutely must do better.
We're, I'm going to dive into my favorite program, restorative justice. As part of the 2024 adopted budget, the council requests to the report from the DOE on restorative justice programming as part of the terms and conditions. Council Finance, I just, just got the report about a couple of hours ago and we're reviewing it. Is it the staffing shortage part of the reason the agency couldn't produce the report on time? If not, what is the cause? It was due September 30th.
They're doing it for me to report it?
I just got it a couple of hours ago and it was due September 30th, 2023. Today's October 25th, 2023.
So we definitely apologize for the shortfall in that respect. We offer no excuse as to why the report was not submitted to you in this time. I could spend time blaming budget people and so forth, will not do that. Simply apologize to the Chair and ask for mercy, no, forgiveness in that respect. Thank you.
Timeout, yes.
Yeah.
So the budget for restorative justice was 17.96 million for '22, '23 school year, right? How much of the funding was the federal stimulus and how much of that was city funding?
So federal stimulus funding for 7.9 million, I'm so sorry. Good afternoon, Council. It is a pleasure to be in community with you. I just dove right in.
No problem.
Thank you so much for your continued advocacy for restorative practices. So to answer your question, that out of the 13.7 million, 5.7 was tax levy and 7.9 was stimulus.
Considering this program was expanded to fund largely through federal dollars which are due to expire soon, how does the New York City Public Schools plan to continue to provide the current level of services, build on the momentum gained from the restorative justice program?
So as she's 100% stated, we are facing cuts, and unfortunately, restorative justice, as you can see, was, is in line, possibly in line for the cuts as conversations are happening. But we can, how the funding is going to continue is through your continued advocacy.
So I literally have to dance for my own supper. Okay. Yeah, but because it works, right? So why is it always the programs that work that are always on the chopping blocks? So those are the programs that make kids want to come to school. We talk about enrollment, we talk about we're not seeing students. These are the programs, those are the safety net. Coming into this council, we provided for students that want to come to school, those hard-won students you talk about, these are the programs that are helping these children. So I don't understand why I can't even wrap my head around it.
Just really, as a point of clarity, there is no plan to cut restorative. There's no plan or commitment from this administration to cut restorative or a plan yet to cut any of these respective programs. We agree with you wholeheartedly. These are the programs that work for our kids, these are the programs that make a difference, these are the programs that we stand before and say to you, we need more in order to do better for our young people. So we agree with you 110%. There are definitely going to be some hard conversations, not by, not for this, for this agency, but all agencies as a whole. And the fact of the matter, the fact of the matter, my team says I always say fact of the matter, is that there are going to be some programs cut, some resources to, to the city cut. We are not the decision makers in that respect. We definitely appreciate a seat at the table while we talk about what are the agency's priorities and where we see the, the, the greatest internal support to, to continue, at least if not all, but some portion of these programs in schools. We agree with you 100% that these are the working programs and we need to continue to move them forward.
And I'm also seeing that you, out of all this funding, you have $4 million that are unspent. What is the plan for the unspent funding?
So the unspent funding, four million?
Yep. Four million dollars was left unspent. Yes, ma'am.
There was a SAM allocated to schools in February of last year, and which schools received, I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
This SAM was issued in February, where schools had four months to utilize the funding. The utilization rate was 45% as schools utilized 1.6 million out of the 2.8 million stimulus funds allocated. So there was one point, based on our records, there was 1.5 million unspent.
Yep, four million. You get back to me. That's, that's a good question. You can get back to me on how you plan on spending the four million.
Yeah, I'm, I apologize, Council.
That's okay.
But based on this SAM and based on our funding source, the remaining was 1.5 million.
You sure?
And we, we can definitely double check that.
Please.
We will, absolutely.
So, so what happened to the impact of the restorative justice programming on the school community? And that's what I was talking about earlier, how the impact.
So I'm happy to share the impact with you, and of course, because of your continued advocacy around the work for restorative practices. 2018 to 2019 compared to 2023, as mentioned, we want to compare two full school years. The analysis schools that implemented restorative practices with high fidelity, meaning they have embedded practices within their schools, saw a 3.9% decrease in Level 4 and 5 infractions as opposed to citywide seeing 1.7. So there was clear impact there. Additionally, schools that have instituted restorative practices saw, saw a greater decline in suspensions than citywide restorative practice schools, 17.8% decrease versus 13.4% decrease citywide. So we are extremely proud of that data. Also, we saw some quick wins with the rates of suspensions. The suspension rates remained the same citywide while, while schools who have embedded restorative practices saw a slight decrease, 0.7% decrease. So we, it's a small decrease, but we want to still celebrate those wins. And Achia Joseph, you know as an educator, in addition to those quantitative data, it's important to lift the qualitative data. So after we've implemented programs in schools, and after our providers provide restorative justice professional development, we survey teachers, we survey staff members, and we even survey students. And the results were when they, when they have completed restorative practices, trainings, that the community was strengthened, bonds were strengthened, increased community engagement, where more families, more students and relationships begin to build collectively across school communities. Additionally, equitable practices on how student voices are heard was living within school communities that have deeply embedded restorative practices. And culture and climate in those school communities have also grown through restorative practice training and services being implemented in those schools.
So your terms and condition report, the report does not indicate what level of participation by students in each program and school, or how many students were in the program as requested in the terms and condition. Do you have that data?
So we currently serve over 900 schools this school year to date, and it's serviced, we service from elementary school to grade 12, specifically focusing on middle schools and high schools.
And you're going to get that data to me, right?
The number of students, yes. The students are in the schools that we service, and over 900 schools, but I'm happy to get the breakdown of students.
I need a breakdown, thank you.
Of all students, correct, thank you.
And this is, and this is borough-wide, right? Citywide?
Correct, all five boroughs, including Staten Island.
Including Staten Island. I got you.
Including Staten Island. We are across all five boroughs.
That borough feel unloved, so I got to always make sure I'm uplifting them.
We're bringing the love to Staten Island, for sure.
I mean, the report indicates that 559 schools has direct services and 300 have indirect services in the fiscal of 2023. The fiscal 2024 model show DOE plans to provide direct services in 364 schools and indirect services in 600 and 604. Why fewer schools are getting direct restorative justice services?
So this year, we, we are providing direct services, correct, to 364, indirect to 604 schools. We, so last year, the mo, we have shifted the model. Last year, we had one person servicing over 40 to 50 schools. So this year, to be more intentional about the work that we're doing in our school communities, we have one restorative justice coordinator who will be serviced, serviced in 25 schools. In addition to that, this year, we have allocated funds to hire over 100, to hire 180 school-based restorative justice coordinators in schools. So those are staff members that currently work there. In addition to partnering up with staff members within schools, we are also expanding our youth services.
Is there a plan to phase out restorative justice in favor of Project Pivot? We've heard reports from advocates that coordinated positions will be absorbed into Project Pivot. Could somebody clear that up for me on the record?
On the record, there is no plan to phase out restorative justice in, to phase in Project Pivot. The two programs do something entirely different for schools. I will let the team explain the differences in the program. We are not a one or, I mean, one or the other. We are inclusive of different programs providing supports to our schools. All of our schools have different needs, but we agree that our schools have needs, right? And there is no real cookie cutter solution to meet our, our various students' needs from around the city. So there is no commitment to, or a plan to phase out restorative in place of Project
Also, one of the things I wanted to touch base, we know there's a citywide hiring freeze, but does it only apply to city-funded positions that are exempt? And yet advocates have heard their freeze, their freeze on hiring funding for restorative justice, even though New York City Public Schools had federally funded and hiring, and funded these programs?
I'm sorry, Council, can you repeat the question? I apologize.
It's okay. We understand there's a citywide hiring freeze, right? We know there's a hiring freeze, correct?
Yes, we do, we know that.
But does it apply only to city-funded positions? And are you guys exempt from the, involved in the public safety? Is that, are you exempt? If not, advocates have heard that there's, is the freeze on the hiring funding for restorative justice, even though New York City Public Schools had federal funding allocated to make available for restorative justice this year? Why is there a freeze on funding and hiring when New York City Public Schools has federal funding to use for restorative justice?
Yes, federal stimulus funding is expiring, and we want to be responsible knowing that. Those dollars will not be available next year to cover headcount. That's why having a commitment to sustainable funding other than stimulus funding is extremely important to us and important to especially my restorative practice team, so that these critical hires can remain. So we look to your continued partnership as you've always been partnered with us and advocating for restorative justice practices.
Because my New York City kids, that's what they ask for. They don't want, as much as we love our schools, school safety agents, but they want alternatives to school safety agents, or some of them don't want school safety agents in their buildings at all. And that's the call I've always gotten. Of course, I've always asked, show me the model. Show me a model we can have in plan. Milwaukee has a model from what I understood, LA has reduced it. So those are the things that my students, when I listen to young advocates, those are the things they say, and I advocate for them.
No, I got that. One of the, one of the things that I was privileged to have seen outright was the police commissioner and the chancellor, the previous police commissioner and the chancellor, where they had forums with young people, and young people, we, there was asked, should we take NYPD school safety out of the schools? And the answer was no. They wanted to make sure that they're safe, so that's where we differ at.
Yeah, because that's something we hear a lot with young people. They want to see a guidance council, they want to see a social worker before they walk into the building. And one of the things I always wanted to ask, in terms of, okay, school safety is in a building now, we, they're still there.
25 years, this is going to be our 25-year anniversary.
25 years in schools, is there any way we can, I walked into a school building and everybody was dressed in blue, any way we can soften the look sometime?
That's something that we can look into, but traditionally, having a person of authority looks and has, it's actually a deterrent as well for the bad people, the bad act of someone coming in.
But it also reduces anxiety. It also reduces anxiety, and I visited a school with a chancellor, and that's what the young people were saying. When we go through the mental detectors, one thing, and then when we see the SSA in those hardcore uniform, as if I'm going, as if I'm going to walk into a police precinct, it sends a whole nother level of psyche on their, on their minds.
I think our young people know those men and women in those uniforms, as I said, our 73% of them are women that look like us and have that relationship with them. As I said, our seventy-three percent of them are women that look like us and have that relationship with them. Bottom line, I guarantee they really overall want to see those people in that school. Even when I was growing up, we had good school safety agents in our school, Morris High School. And just seeing them in that school made a difference, and it does all the time. The safety, the safety of our kids is at par.
Always, always at the center.
Yes.
If restorative justice is facing a fiscal cliff, how is DOE planning on hiring more coordinators this year? And how will the work continue for the two hundred coordinators that are already hired?
So we're committed to continuing to do the work within, with restorative practices. But as Chief Ramper San said, there have been cuts and decisions are being, currently being made about those priorities.
Do you want to add on? No? Okay. Chair Hanks, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Joseph. I just want to echo the sentiments of some of my colleagues who, you know, again, this is not easy work, you know, I'm a mom. And I had great relationships with my school safety agents and, you know, I understand the value that, you know, you bring to a school, and you're often being a parent, giving them deodorant or the things that they need, you know, talking to them. You know, these kids know how to turn up, you know, and so it's not lost on me the significance of the school safety agents. My question is, my question is, it's really gonna be about the vacancies. But just for clarity, you know, minimum wage is thirty-three, five, you know. That is, it's significant that if you're getting paid a couple of dollars over minimum wage, that, you know, that is often not sustainable. So many of these folks do this work because they love it, and so we just want to acknowledge that.
You have to have a passion for it, you know, everyone can do this.
That is very true. As a mother, I would attest to that, I would.
I would say some people only want to be with their children for one, two hours a day.
Yeah, that's not me.
And these people are with, our agents are dedicated and spending more than eight hours with the students.
Yeah, so I, you know, you have to say that for the record, you have to acknowledge that, and you have to acknowledge our teachers and our educational institutions because, you know, it's not easy nowadays. We had a thirteen-year-old die at the hands of a fourteen-year-old. And this is the world we're living in right now, which is why it's very important for me to kind of drill down on the nine-one-one clause, where they're coming from, because it's gonna inform what we do as far as our CMS. And those things are incredibly important that we have that data. And, you know, this is why we have these hearings, so we can get a better understanding of what's needed. And so my question is, can you provide an update on the current number of school safety agent vacancies within NYPD School Safety Division?
Three oh one, three hundred and one.
Wow. What factors have contributed to the recent increase in school safety agent vacancies in New York City Public Schools?
I think you hit it on the nose, regards to the money. That plays a major role for our people staying with us or moving on. I think there's a real need to really answer that question and what we can do to really bring money into this. So they can actually have a living.
Is there a number that you have in mind that is going to be presented to the council, even at budget hearings or?
I know my counsel's probably looking at me saying, don't answer that question, but.
I saw her kick you. I saw it.
Did you see the little nod that she gave me?
I did.
Bottom line is, you can't put a dollar price on that.
You actually can, but it's okay, we won't today.
I'll take it.
Okay, so for NYPD, what is the allocation of school safety agents throughout the city? That's the first one. Can, and what is that number borough by borough, school by school? We're really kind of trying to get to is the deployment figures and how NYPD decides where to deploy school safety agents? Is there a process?
I'm gonna have my director, deputy director, answer that question. She's been waiting for answering one of these questions, he's ready. Go ahead. This is Director Tracy Ryan.
Good afternoon. I can speak on the deployment borough by borough. So we have thirty-nine, thirty currently. We have two hundred and eighty-six in Manhattan South, two hundred and ninety agents in Manhattan North, three hundred and thirty-eight in the Bronx West, three hundred and fifty-one in the Bronx East, six hundred and eight in Brooklyn South, five hundred sixty-one in Brooklyn North, four hundred and ninety-three in Queens South, three hundred and seventy-seven in Queens North, one hundred and eighty-six in Staten Island, and then we have two hundred and twenty agents.
Sorry.
I saw that face of Staten Island, but don't worry.
Two hundred and twenty agents, which are divided up between the YRT, the thirty-three new recruits that we have, the recruit trainers, our special services unit, and our operation staff. And two hundred and twenty that's left, they are either out on some type of long-term leave, whether it's paid, unpaid, or terminal leave.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you so much for that, that gives clarity. So how are those numbers, how do we come up with those numbers? So of course I'm gonna ask as to, Staten Island gets one eighty-six, and I mean, is that population, is it?
It's gonna go, I mean, there's definitely different formulas that we use, but depending on the school, how many people are in the school, how many young people are into that school, that's gonna weigh a factor. Where our agents live, if I could take an agent, we have, let's say, a bulk of agents that live in the Bronx that apply, sending them to Staten Island, they'll probably work there for a week and then they'll be gone because the most, majority of them are spending their, majority of our agents spend their money coming to work, they use mass transportation. And that takes away from that thirty-six thousand, thirty-five thousand dollars we were just talking about. So keeping them within that geographical area screws to us too. So what we're done is to actually do something in regards to, something that's never been done before, is to really recruit within. So let's say instead of waiting for their standard NYPD recruit, which are our partners, to do recruitment for us, who better else can sell this career path is our own agents. So we put agents in Staten Island that live and come from Staten Island to recruit within, so we can get more people from Staten Island and other parts of the boroughs.
Thank you. So I have an additional question, that'd be my final question. Thank you, Chair, for your, for allowing me to do so. So the salary, is that based on full-time? When school hours are, do they work nine to five?
It's a full-time job, this, so it's not like a school crossing gods, this is full-time, so it's thirty-six, seven thousand dollars as a full-time job.
Thank you all so much for entertaining our questions, answering them to your best ability, I really appreciate it. Thank you so much, Chair. This is a great hearing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair Hanks. A four twelve amendments. We understand that the DOE recently proposed significant amendments to the chancellor's regulation, A four twelve, on security in schools that clarify instances where principals should not involve SSAs and the NYPD and provide guidance on policing and questioning and arrests for students. We've heard that you intend to do feedback session regarding these amendments. What is the plan to engage community about the significant change and get their feedbacks?
So we definitely publicized, we posted, post the recommended changes and asked for feedback in that respect as we do with all chancellor's regulations. I want to say it's like a forty-five day posting, giving the public an opportunity to comment on those respective changes. One of the things that we did do is we pulled down the vote and we extended it, extended the period before we go back to vote by next month, November, so that we can engage not only the community but other stakeholders to give their, give their input as it relates to the respective changes.
What is the outreach plan?
So we're gonna work with our parent-facing division to reach out to parent partners, work with our CECs, and work with our PEP to get additional folks to participate in those respective sessions.
Will you send translated letters home with students about feedback sessions?
What we will do is, about the feedback sessions?
Translated letters into the many languages that the New York City students speak.
On the feedback sessions?
Yes. Are the, oh, language access, will that be available? The council pays for language access in New York City Public Schools, so we expect all the pieces of information going home to be translated in all the languages that the students speak in New York City.
As we do with all of our correspondence to our families, we will ensure that they're receiving correspondence in the languages of which they speak.
Thank you. Can you send the council the description of these feedback session within the next two weeks for us to distribute to our constituents? Will, will that be an ongoing conversation with the council members as well to make sure we're also doing our part to support that conversation?
We can absolutely do that.
And what is the plan to train staff on these new protocol requirements to make sure they are followed?
Hundred percent. We'll definitely identify the appropriate staff members in schools to then turnkey that training to the, to the overall school community to ensure that all of the respective terms and conditions in these regulations are in fact followed and adhered to.
How will staff be held accountable if they are over relying on NYPD and SSAs to address school-based non-criminal incidents?
Such is the case in all of our schools. We have an instructional leader who is a principal who will hold those staff members accountable if in fact we find that that is the case.
Thank you. NYPD testified that School Safety Division will be absorbing fifty police officers deployed as youth response team, coupled with SSA. How the New York City Public School are part of that decision and how are these teams interacting with young people?
Of course, we, with our partners in public schools, talk and have these conversations on how we're gonna deploy. There, this conversation has been going on from the highest level of our departments, both our agencies, to make sure that we provide the best safety for our young people.
What is the interaction with a young person? Do they know that person's role, how?
Yes, so since it's fairly new that we rolled this out since almost last school year, the officers, the chief of department has been great on making sure that we're getting the police officers within school safety as well as DOE, making sure that we are introduced to all the parent, not parent, excuse me, the principals and the stakeholders at local schools and things of that nature, and making the schools available and that.
And parent coordinators too, right?
Yes, of course, because we want it to be by them. This is all about having, shaping what the school and what the kids want. It's really about what the students and the young people want, and we're listening to them.
Did you bring young people to the table when you were making that decision? Were they part of the conversation?
Of course, and one of the things that came out of that was a camp, I wouldn't say camp, it was a summer enrichment program through the summer, and it was with three hundred and something kids from Brooklyn, Manhattan, and the Bronx. We'd like to expand that this year coming up next summer to make sure that our young people, our YRT officers and agents are intermingling with young people, because this is not all about making arrests here, this is about actually engaging with young people.
The NYPD has doubled the number of YCO officers. How was the New York City Public School a part of that decision? How did you guys come about?
From day one, from day one, our mayor, from the chancellor, as well as the police commissioner, have been involved in these conversations and making sure that we increase. And we, obviously, there's nothing better than the New York City Police Department wants to make sure our young people are safe. So having more YCOs dedicated to youth, the young people, there was another, never, I think we've all been locked up with that from day one.
I may have some young people that disagree with that. We've heard from some teachers that they have experienced a noticeable increase in police presence with very little guidance from New York City Public Schools. What information have teachers and other staff members received explaining the role of YCOs? And how is New York City Public Schools deciding where they are deployed? You look puzzled.
So New York City Public Schools definitely do not have an input in where YCOs are deployed. They are employees of the New York City Police Department. As it relates to teachers hearing more of a presence of police personnel in school, I would definitely like to know more about what, where those schools are and think around whether or not there were specific incidents that occurred in that school that required the attention of more police officers in that respective school. But as it relates to the deployment of NYPD staff, we don't play a role in that.
NYPD, how do you decide, where do you deploy YCOs?
Our YCOs are done at a local base regards to the local priest and commander. A local priest and commander is gonna make the decision along with his personnel and figure out what the trends are within that area, what young people are asking for. Community affairs is involved in that to make sure that we're addressing the young people's needs within that local-based area. That means the priests and servants.
And what does New York City Public, do you monitor the impact and increase of police presence? Do you monitor that?
Say again, I'm sorry.
Do you monitor the increase in police presence around the schools?
Yes, I want to make sure that, since I'm in charge of School Safety Division, that we don't over-police. There's such thing as make sure that we don't over-police. With that being said, we do want our people to feel safe, our young people. So putting a police presence and a major police presence in certain areas, and I think one of your colleagues actually talked about how there's sometimes school rivalry between the two, well, we want to make sure we're preventive, not reactive. So bottom line is we're gonna be proactive to make sure we do have our police officers in places as well as our agents in those locations to make sure we can address any need that may arise.
What data was used to determine doubling the numbers of the YCOs?
That came from the chief of department's office. Regards to talking to each one of the borough, each one of the borough commanders as well as their local priest and commanders. They saw a need with the chief patrol, they increased that.
Are they trained in de-escalation and restorative justice as well?
I can't talk to restorative justice, but I can just say that they are getting something regards to.
Are they involved in Project Pivot? YCOs?
Not at the moment.
Or will they be?
Yes, that is the intention.
And you will let the education chair know that when it happens, correct?
Yes, we will.
Because I don't want to have to have a hearing.
The police department is willing to work with anyone and everyone.
I'm sure you are, just to protect the kids, okay.
Love the kids.
All right. All right. We wanted to talk quickly in this, I should be wrapping up. How has the recent change in radio frequency improved response time to schools when incidents happen?
I would definitely say it has increased to make sure that our people are fully alert. And I say that because time is sensitive. Crucial information has to be put out, so having that direct information to the New York City Police Department to respond is priceless. So it's a win-win for everyone, for the people and our counterparts over in the New York City Public Schools as well as our agents and the young people that are inside the schools.
But then you were, then you reversed it and sent it back to DOE frequency. What was the logic behind that?
That was the last police commissioner that made a decision in the sense of, and when we say reverse, we just eliminated how many people were actually on that frequency.
That has access to it.
Yes, so we're evaluating that as we go.
Okay, what is the protocol for school safety agents to request immediate assistance when patrol officers during emergencies? How does that work?
They will call for assistance, there's a certain radio code that we would use, and that would actually prompt local police precinct personnel as well as anyone around that area or our youth response team or our School Safety Division personnel.
I have a question. When a student is restrained or something happens to the student, what is the protocol in allowing that student to re-enter back into classroom? How is that set up?
So elaborate a little bit, so.
For example, a student with a, with a suspension or they left the school for something that they did. How do you have them re-enter back into the school? What's the protocol in place for that?
So the protocol, I'll let, I'll let my colleague talk about the suspension protocol, but as it relates to a young person who, they may have been involved in an incident and police involved, maybe school-related or not school-related, that young person has an opportunity to talk to a social worker, guidance counselor about that experience, talk about the potential trauma that it may have caused, and work with our existing systems to sort of provide care to make this young person feel better, supported, wraparound services that may be needed, external supports that may be needed. That is the work that our schools are required to do to ensure that young people have a good school experience.
And if that child decided not to come back to the school, what are the protocols set in place for that child?
Oh, definite outreach, right? So definite outreach by the school, right? And that's continued outreach by the school, right? Before we involve external agency partners, including, and that outreach includes a home visit to find out what is the reason why a young person is not re-engaging back into the school community. That's just not sort of left out there for young people to just be absent in that space. We want to ensure that every action is taken to re-engage this. We want to ensure that every action is taken to re-engage this young person back into the school community. Even if that means back to the school community or another school community because they may not feel comfortable in that space.
Especially after incidents. How many times have you had to do a home visit?
I mean, that's individual school-based. I mean, we could definitely reach out to schools. Our superintendents now have attendance staff, attendance folks on staff who do outreach for various reasons, whether it means that a student may have moved out of the country but didn't make notification to the schools and we are marking this young person not present. That's a part of the responsibility of that staff, but we can definitely get you some members that speak to the amount of times their home visits were conducted.
The last time the chancellor was here, and I did suggest to him that I think attendance teachers and social workers should work hand in hand. I may not be coming to school not because I don't want to, maybe there's a social issue as to, and I had recommended, I had hoped that you guys would implement that because they go hand in hand. I'm not coming to school, it could be housing insecurity, food insecurity, there can be so many reasons as to why I'm not coming in, so I think they should go hand in hand in working and bringing. Do you have any data to share on statistics of the frequency of police interactions with students in emotional crisis in public schools over the past few years?
I'll have our director answer that. Ms. Tracy Ryan.
So our child and crisis interventions this school year through October 15th decreased by 27.5% when comparing the same time period in the 21-22 school year. It was 248 versus 342. Child and crisis interventions decreased 19.9% from school year 22-23 versus the 18-19 school year. We had 2,840 in 22-23 versus the 3,547 in 18-19.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you. Well, thank you. And I'll be sending out the questions and make sure I get the answers to the questions. And there'll be my questions that I want to ask when I reach out.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chair, and thank you to New York City Public Schools and NYPD for testifying today and answering council member questions. We will now turn to public testimony. We will be limiting public testimony today to three minutes each. For in-person panelists, please come up to the table once your name has been called. For virtual panelists, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and the Sergeant at Arms will set the timer and give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. Our first in-person panelists, Iman Ghal, Elizabeth Wasif, Hillary Ashraf, Chauncey Young, Esperanza Vázquez. Please make your way to the front desk. Jan, how many in-person panels do we have? In-person panels do we have? Is it a lot? Okay. Let's say each panel takes about... Okay, well, you have?
I have two. Forty-five minutes. Okay, so we're not going to get too virtual till after work. Oh, yeah, I'm going to have to wait until I come back.
Do you want them now or do you want me to kind of hold on to them?
No, you can hold on. I just want, I want to know what my day is like. It just started, got it, thank you.
Somebody's missing. Okay. You got everybody?
Everyone? One, two, three, four, five, six, and then a translator, right?
Andrea is translating for this parent, okay.
I have six here. Hmm? Jan, I have six here. Wouldn't there be seven if there's also a translator? All right.
Iman Ghal, you may begin your testimony.
Gotcha. Good afternoon, Chair Joseph and the members and staff of the Committee on Education and Public Safety. My name is Iman Gad, and I'm the Policy Coordinator at Girls for Gender Equity. GGE is a Brooklyn-based organization that works intergenerationally through a Black feminist lens to center the leadership of Black girls and gender expansive young people of color in reshaping culture and policy through advocacy, youth-centered programming, and narrative shift to achieve gender and racial justice. We are offering testimony today in support of restorative justice programs and redirecting funding from school policing and policing infrastructure into supportive staff and healing-centered programs for students. The mayor is planning to cut $2 billion from our schools to a citywide financial, due to a citywide financial crisis. Instead of investing in what is the most important to improve students' education and experiences in schools, he is increasingly granting the NYPD access into young people's lives by approving a military-style recruitment initiative targeting students at schools. Mental health and career counseling services are placed in the hands of school cops, and unannounced scanning of students across the city is being ramped up. We are urging the City Council to use its power to put a stop to NYPD initiatives that seek to police and surveil young people, and instead shift money to school communities and the restorative staff, resources, and programs that support students to learn and thrive. This makes schools safer for everyone, especially for Black girls and transgender and gender expansive young people who are continuously and uniquely criminalized and pushed out of schools for their gender and self-expression. This governing body can no longer succumb to pressure from the NYPD and school police union to direct school funds into hiring school cops. Granting the NYPD greater access to young people's lives and activities, both at schools and in their neighborhoods, does nothing to improve the quality of students' education, nor does it set them up for a successful future. The NYPD has been given permission and funding to open so-called wellness centers in schools and communities, putting school cops in charge of career counseling, mental health, and enrichment activities for young people. This is happening as the mayor gears to cut over $2 billion in resources and staffing from schools, resources that belong to trained staff who are equipped to support students holistically without further criminalization. Students should be able to access the restorative and healing support that they need, and schools should have robust options for how they do their healing-centered work. We believe in staffing schools with full-time, school-based, restorative justice coordinators who are able to be part of the school community for the long term. We make this demand based on our collective decades of experience as advocates and youth workers. School buildings should be well-resourced, especially with empathetic adults who are committed to the safety and well-being of young people. Restorative justice practices for one, facilitate youth-adult collaboration in cultivating safe, healing-centered schools. Because City Council leadership listened to the outcry of students, parents, and school staff, restorative justice funding was protected this past year, but its actual fate today is uncertain. Council must make sure that the city is directing public funds directly towards school budgets and sustainable long-term practices for restorative justice and peacekeeping. Council must be there every step of the way to hold the chancellor accountable to giving the schools the funds that they were promised. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your testimony, Elizabeth Wasif.
Hello, Council. My name is Elizabeth. I'm a student from South Brooklyn and an advocate at the YAYA Network. I value my education and the opportunity to explore, grow, and learn in a safe environment. But for me, this meant transferring from a heavily policed school with metal detectors to a new high school. The lack of resources and access available in my zip code unfortunately infringed my ability to attend a school that would accommodate my needs. I commute up to an hour and 45 minutes to a school in an effort to avoid any interactions with school safety agents. School is not the grounds for police. Yet it was mentioned earlier that there are 491 in South Brooklyn. Primarily trained in law enforcement, they foster anxiety and security and discouragement among us students. Their presence contributes to the disproportionate criminalization of Black and Brown students, further perpetuating the disparities in our education system. Our schools should be communities that encourage learning with unwavering support from teachers, counselors, and peers. On Monday, I witnessed direct police intervention at school. It was scary. I learned that transferring to a new school was not going to limit my interactions with the police because the DOE is overly reliant on the overly criminalizing NYPD. You'll be safe in here, I heard my teacher repeat to my classmates, waving them into her room amidst the chaos, suggesting the classroom was safer than the hallway. There was a student conflict and I was in lockdown for more than 30 minutes. I had to be escorted to the bathroom. It is alarming that an area in my school was considered unsafe. It is alarming that I needed an adult to walk me to the bathroom like I was a toddler in a public park. When I walked across the hallway to use the bathroom, I saw about eight cops lined up behind, beside school faculty, and I was scared. The same adults trained to engage with criminals were addressing a teenage conflict. How are they going to do that? Ultimately, I had early dismissal, and my school didn't honor my values of learning, growing, and exploration. Police pose a violation to my education. In fact, I missed out on an opportunity to work at school too because of the early dismissal. Intro Number Three is a meaningful step toward reducing police impact in school by eliminating use of restraints on students in emotional crisis. However, to foster an environment with safe healing and learning, we need police-free schools. I strongly advocate for the implementation of restorative justice, peer mediation, and healing practices as the initial response to conflicts within all of our schools. We need to prioritize approaches that nurture our students and foster a safe environment conducive to learning by redirecting our funding from the NYPD to restorative justice practices and mental health counseling. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your testimony, Hillary Ashraf.
Good evening. My name is Hillary Ashraf. I'm a student at Midwood High School and a member of Drum, DICE is Rising Up and Moving. I'm also a member of the Dignity in Schools Campaign, a coalition of over 20 New York City-based organizations consisting of students, parents, educators, and advocates who work to create a system of school discipline and safety that is based on mutual respect and problem-solving to end the school-to-prison pipeline. Drum is made up of working-class South Asian and Indo-Caribbean immigrants. Quality education is at the center of our people's demands. We believe that school can only provide quality education when students feel safe enough to explore and express their creativity with support. Restorative justice programs are tried and true practices that provide these supportive spaces for students to overcome the obstacles that they face in school or at home. We want the city to fund RJ programs and provide meaningful cultural shifts needed to build community and address harm as it occurs. We want schools to receive the funding directly to be able to use as they see fit to train and hire supportive staff, and for this funding to come directly from the divestment of policing in our schools. We also want to share our conditional support for Intro Number Three. We support limiting the use of restraint against students in emotional crisis while demanding that no additional funds are allocated for the training of NYPD. DICE NY members have been clear that police should not be interacting with young people, especially young people in crisis. Additionally, this bill mandates clinical and support staff to aid young people in crisis without significant funding to support this mandate, and that financial accountability needs to be addressed. Funds should be invested in DOE positions that support our young people without criminalizing them. As a young person, I really wish City Council would truly listen to our voices. We are the ones that know what we really need. Thank you. I also have an important question. Why is the mayor building robot cops when NYPD's employees and schools aren't being paid enough?
Thank you so much for your testimony, Chauncey Young.
Thought it was going to be my parent leader, Esperanza, going first, but I'm happy to go first.
You can switch the order if you'd like.
Yeah, let's switch, always. Esperanza primero.
And I will be translating for her because we didn't manage to get one.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Esperanza Vázquez. Soy madre de dos hijos y líder del Comité Padres en Acción. Soy un padre miembro de Padres en Acción del 2001. Aunque yo nací en México, mis dos hijos nacieron en el Bronx y fueron a la escuela en el Distrito Nueve. El mayor está en la universidad actualmente, y el menor se graduó recientemente de la Escuela Secundaria del Campus Comunitario de Núñez de Lomé. El Comité Padres en Acción de Núñez de Lomé es una organización dirigida por padres que han estado trabajando con padres en las escuelas de Bronx desde 1996. Nuestro principio principal de PAC es que cada niño merece una educación de calidad. Estamos que no podemos trabajar aislados de nuestras comunidades escolares en el Bronx y trabajar en el cambio que requiere nuestras comunidades con toda la ciudad de Nueva York, el Estado. Se una y exigen cambios, por eso estoy yo aquí hoy. PAC es una organización de miembros de muchas coaliciones y la campaña de escuelas centradas en curación. La Coalición de la Ciudad de Nueva York para la Justicia Educativa y la Coalición de Dignidad de las Escuelas de los Nueva Yorkinos por las Escuelas Públicas Raciales y Soluciones y no Suspensiones. Como organización de las familias inmigrantes negras, latinas, podemos que la ciudad de Nueva York haga más por nuestras escuelas y nuestras familias que inviertan en curar y apoyar a nuestros estudiantes, no castigar ni suspender injustamente a los estudiantes en crisis. Necesitamos que escuchen a los padres y estudiantes y familias que estén experimentando daños reales para que el sistema educativo de la educación pública. Necesitamos dejar de suspender a los estudiantes más de 20 días hasta un año y brindar apoyo educativo. Necesitamos emplear más consejeros escolares, trabajadores sociales, para apoyar la salud socioemocional a los estudiantes. Necesitamos dejar de desplegar policías a nuestras escuelas y usar detectores de metales. Hemos estado abogando durante casi diez años en el estado de Nueva York en esta situación que está pasando en nuestras escuelas. Necesitamos utilizar técnica de justicia restaurativa y dejar de tratar a nuestros niños como delincuentes, y necesitamos soluciones y no suspensiones. Soluciones, no suspensiones.
I will now translate since there was no interpreter. My name is Esperanza Vázquez, and I am the mother of two children, and I have been a parent leader with the New Settlement Parent Action Committee, known as PAC, since 2001. Although I was born in Mexico, both of my children were born in the Bronx and went to school in District Nine. My oldest son is currently in college, and my youngest recently graduated from high school on the New Settlement Community Campus. New Settlement Parent Action Committee is a parent-led organization that has been working with parents in our schools in the Bronx since 1996. Our guiding principle for PAC is that every child deserves a quality education. PAC is here representing the Healing Centered School Campaign, the Dignity in School Coalition, and New Yorkers for Racially Just Public Schools, among others. As an organization of immigrant and Black and Latinx families, we ask that New York we ask that New York State do more for our schools and our families and invest in healing and supporting our students and not unjustly punishing and suspending students in crisis. This is why parents and students, families who have experienced real harm from public education system are currently here. We need to stop deploying police in our schools and using metal detectors. We need to employ more school counselors and social workers to support students' social emotional health. We need to stop suspending students over twenty days and up to a year, robbing them of educational support. We have been advocating for nearly ten years. New York, pay attention. We need to, we need to use restorative justice techniques and stop treating our children like criminals. We need solutions, not suspensions. We need dignity in schools. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and Chauncey Young.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for having us here today. I was listening to this panel and the questions about restorative justice because, as Esperanza was sharing for the New Settlement Parent Action Committee, restorative justice is something we've been advocating for for decades. Ten years ago, when, I'm sure what it says, eight years ago, nine years ago now, when restorative justice was first funded here in City Council, you know, PAC leaders were here advocating for that funding for it. When we heard a year ago that restorative justice was being cut, we advocated collectively with City Council to fight for that. And the most frustrating thing to hear them present to us today and say that they're not cutting restorative justice when they've frozen restorative justice hiring and they haven't frozen other positions within the Department of Education. We know right now, they're supposed to be under the plan. There's supposed to be four to six restorative justice coordinators in each borough. We're currently at two with Manhattan at one restorative justice coordinator. They have told those restorative justice coordinators in meetings that this is the last year of restorative justice because we meet with them, because we've advocated for them for years. So they've shared with us that they've said this is the last year of the restorative justice program and that it is going to be moved to Project Pivot. So what they said to us here was not what they've been saying to their own employees that are in that very program. Also should be noted that over the time that they have not hired the RJ coordinators throughout the borough, the Project Pivot program has hired staff after staff after staff. And I think what City Council needs to look at is, is the money that's being spent for our RJ program, is it going into RJ or is it going into Project Pivot? Because it feels like it's going into Project Pivot. This is the first time we heard today, and we would have loved follow-up, and I think it would be great to feel follow-up from City Council, is a hundred and eighty-six restorative justice coordinators in the school, which actually was a model that Dignity in Schools suggested a long time ago. We would love school-based restorative justice coordinators, but we would like to understand how that's being rolled out and where is that, where is that going? So I think there's more questions than, than answers, but I just wanted to share that with our testimony. I think it's very important that we continue to have a dialogue, Dignity in Schools, City Council. We've put this, that they're supposed to share a report with us. They're obviously not taking that very seriously. And the last thing is just to share that we have one of our members, Hussein Yadaberry, who's now with the Manhattan, with the Muslim Community Network. And just to say that, you know, just as we support our culture-responsive education in schools, we also support religious diversity in schools and we support Resolution for four seventy-six. So, and we thank them for waiting patiently to testify.
Well, thank you. I have two questions for the students. How do you report any issues with SSA to school administrators? And do you find that administrators are helpful in addressing these issues when you do bring them up?
I personally don't resort to SSA's when I have conflict at school. That's not something I'm accustomed to because I'm not accustomed to reaching out to the people who make me feel unsafe or safety.
No, for a school administrator, not to report to the SSA, but do you address the principal and say, hey, this was my experience with an SSA agent?
I see. Typically, I do not. Typically, it's a conversation I have with friends, like talking about our experiences because it seems a lot more relatable. And unfortunately, teachers do not go through the same things that, or principals or the higher-ups do not go through the same things that students go through. For example, they do not go through metal detectors. So how could they understand the anxiety we feel while going through that? And so I feel, it feels invalidating to talk to them, although it might be the solution. In my experience, talking to them has been to appease me, not necessarily to support me.
Well, it's a new school. You said you transferred to a new school, so maybe you might want to give the administrators a shot.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much to our panelists. We're going to move on to our second in-person panel. Sandeep Kandari, Jerry Hippolyte, Michaela Schuckman, Nelson Marr, Jessica Balistreri, and Jess Breet Singh. Please make your way to the front table. Sandeep Kandari, you can begin your testimony.
Good afternoon. My name is Sandeep Kandari. I'm the director of the Youth Defense Practice with the Center for Family Representation. I've been representing young people in court for seventeen years across all five boroughs of New York City. I'm also a parent of two young children in the public school, so I take school safety very seriously. I'd also like to thank the Committee of Public Safety and Education, and specifically Chair Joseph, for holding these hearings. I wanted to address a comment that Councilmember Ayala actually mentioned about her son who's a hot mess. People in my field, we represent the hot messes. And after they get arrested from school, we're the ones who have to work with them and trying to get them feeling safe and reintegrated into school. And I'm going to be talking mainly about Intro Three and the Resolution about the Right to Remain Silent Bill. But first, I wanted to tell you all a story. We had a client recently, sixteen-year-old young man struggling with addiction. He has an IEP for schizoaffective disorder, and the school recently confiscated a vape pen from him. And when he had the pen confiscated, he had a very strong emotional reaction, and the school asked him to leave. And he refused, and then they called school safety agents, and the school safety agents eventually called 911 because he wasn't leaving. Eventually, they said, "You're trespassing," and they handcuffed him and brought him to the precinct as police want to do. That is their job. Was that the right response in this situation? These kinds of situations arise every day. Children are in this kind of distress every day. Since the pandemic, with the level of education loss and the gaps in services that especially kids with special needs have been facing, we know our kids are falling further behind. We have tens of thousands of students who are no longer even engaged in school. So our job is to create an environment where they want to go and where they feel safe. How is a person going to feel after they're handcuffed, embarrassed, and criminalized in school? They're not going to want to go back. And we're working so hard every day to get our clients to go back to school. What does a judge tell them every day? "You need to go to school." Well, if the school is a place where you have metal detectors, new fancy locks, more cameras, and more police apparatus, that's not a place where my clients feel safe. For years, my clients have been complaining that the school is a place with school safety agents, especially where they don't feel safe. They feel that they're being surveilled. And so I ask, I commend the City Council for proposing this bill, but it doesn't go far enough. We need to get police out of our schools. We need to focus on ideas that work, like restorative justice, peer mentoring, more family engagement, and more mental health support. And briefly, I'd like to just talk about the Right to Remain Silent Bill. Children should never be victims of their class or race. If a parent has money and their child is being interrogated, they got a fancy private lawyer with them at the precinct. That shouldn't be the case. Regardless of how much money you have, you should be protected by our government. And so I ask that this very important bill that supports all children, who are so susceptible to law enforcement, to false confessions, that we should push Albany to pass this bill and protect all children of New York. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony, Jerry Hippolyte.
Thank you, Chair Joseph, members of the Education and Public Safety Committees, for the opportunity to testify regarding the new safety initiatives in New York City public schools. I'm Jerry Hippolyte, Chief of Staff at Partnership with Children. Since nineteen oh eight, Partnership with Children has strengthened the social, emotional, as well as cognitive skills of children in New York City to succeed in society, school, and most importantly, life. We place licensed clinical social workers and teaching artists in schools of underserved communities to provide critical trauma-informed mental health counseling, community-based programming, as well as healing-based arts education. Last year alone, Partnership with Children's program impacted over twenty-seven thousand children, families, and community members across forty-eight New York City public schools. In two thousand fifteen, we began partnering with the Office of Community Schools as lead CBO in community schools across the city. I say this to say that all students deserve to be safe in schools. We understand that DOE has made efforts to hire additional school safety agents, and again, our condolences to the safety agent that passed away. Lock school doors, enhance safety training. But we would like to underscore and really emphasize that student safety should not be limited to the physical nature of being safe, but it also should be inclusive of the feeling of being safe. As reported by the mayor's office in March of two thousand twenty-one, nearly forty percent of New York City high school students showed that they felt sad or hopeless almost every day for at least two weeks during the past year. The Black and Latinx students were most at risk at the same survey, and this doesn't even include the ripple effects of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Student challenges with mental health often lead them engaging in actions and behaviors that are not aligned with school expectations, making it really difficult for them and their peers to learn. So our recommendation that speaks to student safety, we're encouraged by DOE's efforts to prioritize mental health wellness as well as as they continue to strategize around school safety. But we'd like to offer some recommendations. The first one being the continued expansion of community schools with transparency. Community schools' holistic approach to student learning has already been proven and increased the mental wellness of students as well as supporting their learning efforts. Secondly, examine structural capacity to support social workers. We believe that every student should have access to social workers and that every social worker should have the capacity, training, and resources to effectively support students. Note the quality of services is just as important as the quantity. And it's unfortunate that many social, many social workers that are in schools are stretched thin across multiple sites, and not all of them receive clinical supervision or training. And so we actually encourage DOE to examine the capacity as well as identify opportunities, such as expanding partnerships with CBOs to provide more meaningful impact. And with that, I say again, we appreciate the city's commitment to ensuring students are safe in schools, and we continue to partner with children, families, and community support across the spectrum of safety. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from Michaela Schuckman.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify on behalf of Legal Services NYC today about Intro Number Three, as this bill covers an issue that our education rights practice has been focused on for many years. LSNYC negotiated a settlement with the city in two thousand fourteen to secure significant changes we hoped would lessen the overall use of EMS as a response to students in emotional crisis. Despite the settlement, New York City public schools overall are still calling EMS and using restraints for students in emotional distress at almost the same rate as they did pre-settlement. This is a problem because the involvement of school safety personnel or police officers, the use of mechanical restraints, and the forced removal of students from their school environment through EMS traumatizes students, increasing the likelihood of school dropout and future hospital or criminal incarceration. To ensure that EMS is only called in the most extreme circumstances, there must be robust procedures in place to track the use of de-escalation methods. Schools should report not just instances in which EMS was called, but should identify the de-escalation tactics used prior to the call and why they were deemed to be unsuccessful. And when officers are called, it is critical that they are trained in de-escalation tactics and trauma-informed practices consistently. While these steps are important to fulfill the promise of the two thousand fourteen settlement, the need for other school-based measures is greater than ever as the nation deals with a crisis of children's mental health. If the goal is to lessen the involvement of officers in moments of crisis, the first and most impactful step is to lessen those moments of crisis in the first place. Funding should be primarily focused on investing in resources and training for all school personnel to support students' social, emotional learning, increasing the number of social workers and other staff trained in de-escalation and healing-centered and restorative practices, and expanding mental health supports, including the Mental Health Continuum. For students to progress educationally, they need a safe setting where their social and emotional needs are met. For more vulnerable students, this safe setting includes schools that are equipped to support them while in crisis, allowing them to remain in a familiar setting with familiar faces. To advance this goal, methods of restraint for students in emotional crisis must be used only in the rarest of circumstances, and methods that are healing-centered and trauma-informed must be able to be used easily and effectively. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Next, we will hear from Jessica Balistreri.
Good afternoon, Chair Joseph and members of the council. My name is Jessica Balistreri. I am a data analyst at the New York Civil Liberties Union, NYCLU. I am here today in qualified support of Introduction Number Three as there is an urgent need to protect students in emotional crisis from the trauma and harm of being subjected to police tactics in their schools. The NYCLU recently conducted an analysis of the quarterly NYPD data on child in crisis incidents mandated under the Student Safety Act. Our findings observed how last school year, once again, saw the criminalization of young people of color undergoing an emotional crisis. Our analysis found that in two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, eighty-five percent of NYC students handcuffed during a child in crisis situation, which is where a child is in need of urgent mental health intervention, were Black or Latinx. In this same year, officers restrained Black and Latinx children experiencing an emotional crisis with metal handcuffs in one hundred and eighty-six incidents. That's one point six times the rate of white children. In the twenty-two incidents where officers restrained children twelve and under with metal handcuffs, all but two involved were Black and Latinx students. Not a single one of those children were white. This pattern of racial discrimination has persisted for years as students continuously call for the increase in mental health resources in their school facilities, only for the city to respond with an increase in police presence, a rise in metal detector implementation, and ultimately, more handcuffs. While we support the aims of this bill, we recommend amending it to remove the additional training requirements. We do not support additional training of school safety officers to fill gaps created by a lack of trained mental health professionals. The cruel and brutal criminalization officers subject children in emotional crisis to in their own schools must end. The city must adopt empathetic, equitable, holistic practices that assist children in emotional crisis rather than giving more resources to a system that seeks to punish. So, thank you, and we look forward to collaborating with you to put New York at the forefront of progressive school safety policy.
Thank you. I had a quick question for you. That's why, if you heard earlier, I asked, what was the reentry protocol when a student is taken out in handcuffs or criminally justice? How, how do we re-enter them back into the school system, or do we move them to another school? That was one of the questions I asked New York City Public Schools.
What is my experience with my clients' experiences? So it depends on the nature of the incident. Often, the suspension is involved, and then the length of the suspension will also, could determine their relationship to the school. What we find is, you know, children often want to go back to what's familiar, and they do want to go back to their school despite the negative experiences they're having. But sometimes, schools want them to go so...
But sometimes, schools want them to go somewhere else because of their behavior. What we notice is when I'm talking about the hot messes, they're not the most popular kids with the administration. They're hard kids to handle. And so I understand that. You know, we work with them, and they're not the easiest kids sometimes. But those are the kids who need the most help, because if they don't get the help through school, they're going to end up in prison. And we're spending so much money to incarcerate so many people, so let's solve it earlier. So I don't, it depends on the situation whether or not a transfer is going to be proposed by the school. And sometimes, that is what the young person wants, too. They want a fresh start. They want, I hear many, many young people say they want a better school. They don't like their school, they want a better school. And a lot, the Center for Family Representation, we not only have lawyers working, but we have social workers working always with our clients. And most of the work we're doing is really school advocacy to try to get them a better fit for them in terms of school placement.
And yes, we will work. And you know, you said something about the bill not having more teeth?
Yes, so we feel that the city would be, should better utilize those resources in order to fund mental health resources and mental health professionals that are trained to assist students. So students want more counselors, they want more social workers, people they can turn to, people they can trust. And we aren't seeing students trust school safety officers because they're facing these restraints, they're facing these, they're facing force, they're facing brutalization. They want to go into their schools and feel a sense of safety, not feel like they're walking into a prison. And that's unfortunately what a lot of New York City students are feeling like.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all for your testimony. We really appreciate it. The next panel we're going to call is Tina Zhang, Andrea Ortiz, Rohini Singh, Teresa Frye, Dawn Euster. And we called them before, but we're calling once again Japneet Singh. Japneet Singh, if you're here, come up now, please. Okay, we'll start with Tina Zhang.
I will be reading for Tina since she's not here. My name is Tina. I am a student living in South Brooklyn.
Could you state your name for the record, too, please?
My name is Nerlin.
Thank you.
My name is Tina. I am a student living in South Brooklyn. I came as an activist from Yaya Network with the Dignity in School Campaign to advocate for restorative justice. Over the summer, I conducted interviews with students from six different high schools about their experience with restorative justice. One of the key elements that came up again and again is harm people harm people. As one participant shared, many students who have a difficult home lifestyle and do not have the support system at home or at school to cope with their trauma and sometimes misdirect their anger. When school exposed these vulnerable students to police in schools, any conflict that arises with exacerbate that harm according in the student's life should, the situation escalate into punitive disciplines that take the students away from learning as it often does. Share my personal state, my personal strikes with RJ at my school. When I was a sophomore two years ago, there was a very contentious incident relating to the current humiliation crisis with the Islamic humanitarian crisis with the Israel Israeli Hamas war and the Pakistan question and struggle. That incident resulted in much anger from the student body. But taking action upon anger, my school's student Equity Council organized a dialogue for students with Pakistan and Israel guest speakers, which I intended, I bring this up because a restorative justice action team successfully, the Students Equity Council last year, and RJ faculty's a space to work with CBOs like morning side to train students to meditate. Anyways, students need a faculty's safe space to process the situations within our school and to think critically and feel all the way, all the way very profound feelings that many students and families feel about what is happening in the world. And restorative justice practices are so essential to creating the safe space from my interviews with other students RJ experienced. I learned that RJ is so much more than conflict resolution. RJ is about creating a school environment and community where it's possible to compassionately discuss issues inside and outside of school because students feel valued in their perspective as that might be towards RJ Circle. RJ also teaches accountability, and it means also much more to students developing than receiving any punishment where they don't get the opportunity to come through the other side, understanding how and why the things they have done may be harmful. To me, the value of RJ are integral to transforming education from responding to harm to activity identifying and medicating harms from different aspects in students' life. My vision is that students are empowered to thrive academically intellectually, socially, emotionally because of schools centered our well-being.
Thank you so much for your testimony, Andrea Ortiz.
Good afternoon and thank you. My name is Andrea Ortiz from Dignity in Schools. School is a place where young people should feel safe, try new things, and learn. But punitive discipline and policing creates barriers to learning and violates the safety and well-being of students, particularly Brown, Black, and Brown students who are targeted the most harshly by school policing. When students in need are met with a policing response instead of care and support, they are further traumatized. New York City should be a leader in the United States by investing in practices that support young people and divesting from practices that criminalize them. We demand real safety, as you can hear from our students and parents here. We want the city to fully fund meaningful restorative justice and divest from school police and policing infrastructure. A commitment to restorative justice requires a meaningful cultural shift that makes possible to build community safety and respond to harm when it occurs. We are calling on the city to not only protect previous investments, but also expand them to ensure that all students have access to school-based restorative justice coordinators and funding to hire caring community members into supportive positions. Schools need funding to provide training for staff and restorative justice electives that can pay students like these young people here, who you can tell are amazing leaders, to lead the restorative justice practices in their schools. Additionally, we want to offer conditional support for Intro Number Three. We applaud the spirit of this bill, which would limit the use of restraints to address children in emotional crisis, as well as council's leadership in creating more protections for students in our public schools. However, we oppose the section of the bill that requires training for police as we believe that no new funds should go towards the NYPD. DSC members and youth have been clear that police should not be interacting with young people, especially young people who are in crises. Additionally, this bill mandates clinical and support staff to be employed to support young people in crisis without significant funding to support this manding. Funds should be invested in DOE positions that can care for and support young people. Finally, we demand that initiatives focused on holistic student safety should be protected and not be pitted against one another. Restorative justice and other anti-violence efforts must not be forced to compete for city funds. By freezing hiring of school policing, redirecting the $350 million in funding from school policing into opportunities for young people in schools and communities, and removing all remote surveillance technologies in our schools, we can make space and funding available for what youth and families really need, which is healing-centered and restorative schools. Also, we heard from the DOE and NYPD today that they have expanded restorative justice to 900 schools, which we have to call into question today. What proof is there? We need the names of the schools and an accounting to the levels of RJ implementation inside those schools. Are they simply counting schools that have one time received a flyer or an hour-long presentation of RJ practices? Because as you heard from Chauncey, RJ coordinators, who are part of our coalition, have shared that they have clearly been blocked from expanding RJ as planned, and hiring is frozen and RJ programs are being defunded and replaced by Project Pivot. We need transparency here. Finally, it is unconscionable hearing the millions and hundreds of millions of dollars going into locking door assistance, bulletproof bats, high-tech camera assistance. And I plead with you all to see that this is a simple cost-cutting avenue to ensure our schools can have what they truly need. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Rohini Singh.
Good afternoon. My name is Rohini Singh, and I'm the Director of the School Justice Project at Advocates for Children of New York. For over 50 years, AFC has worked to ensure a high-quality education for New York students who face barriers to academic success. AFC is also a proud Dignity in Schools New York member. DSC, as we've heard today, is a coalition dedicated to shifting the culture of New York City public schools away from punishment and exclusion and policing and towards positive approaches to discipline and safety. We stand with and support our DSC colleagues in all of their testimony here today. We're here today to testify in support of Intro Three, which would regulate the NYPD's response to students in emotional crisis within public schools. We also support Resolutions 473 and 534A, excuse me. We are also here to discuss the importance of sustaining key initiatives that are critical to our students' safety, including restorative justice programs and social workers funded by the expiring federal COVID-19 relief funding, and to express our overall concern about this administration's commitment to these programs. In June 2021, AFC published a report analyzing NYPD data over four school years and finding that NYPD officers, including precinct officers and school safety agents, responded to a total of 12,050 incidents in which a student in emotional distress was removed from school. Almost half of these interventions involved children between the ages of four and 12. A disproportionate number of these interventions involved Black students, students with disabilities in District 75 Special Education Schools, and students attending schools located in long and kin communities of color. Unfortunately, despite what the NYPD implied earlier today, the Student Safety Act data in the most recent school year, 2022, 2023, continues to demonstrate these trends. There were 2,838 child in crisis interventions, which is an 18.9% increase from the 2021, 2022 school year. And NYPD used handcuffs in 228 of those 2,838 interventions, around 8%, which is consistent with prior years. 41% of child in crisis interventions in the last school year, and 56 of those in which the student was handcuffed involve Black students, who made up only 24% of enrollment last year. Black students were twice as likely as white students to be handcuffed while in emotional crisis. Intro Three is an important step toward ensuring that our young people in crisis are met with trauma-informed and healing response, not with a threat of law enforcement and handcuffs. While we support Intro Three, we have been calling on the city to shift funding from the NYPD to instead provide needed mental health and social, emotional support for students. And therefore, we want to be explicit that we are not advocating for additional funding to be allocated to train law enforcement officers to respond to students in emotional crisis. Instead, the city's resources must be invested in more support for students so that schools do not rely on law enforcement when a student is experiencing an emotional crisis. As we've heard today, many schools do not have access to train staff to support students, prevent crises, and respond when incidents and crises occur. To this end, we're deeply concerned about the federal stimulus funding for COVID-19 relief that is set to expire in less than a year and is currently being used to fund a lot of the critical initiatives. These include $12 million for restorative justice practices and $67 million to hire 450 school social workers. The need for these supports will continue long after the federal funding expires, and we've already heard that this administration has been scaling back on its restorative justice work in schools, even though funding was allocated for restorative justice this year. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much for your testimony, Teresa Frye.
Thank you, Council. My name is Teresa Frye. I'm a parent of a middle schooler. I'm also an educator for over 20 years, and I'm also a PhD education researcher. And I'm here today with Yaya and DSC as an education researcher. I just want to take a moment to pause and uplift the youth voices that have been shared, because I think those are really important. But from an education research piece, I often think about two questions when I think about education. I think about what is education for and who is education for? And within this line of questioning, what makes these education spaces feel safe or unsafe? And I think that's why we're mainly here today. I would also like to further have some quantitative and qualitative data on those 900 schools, because we've actually been looking for that data methodologically. So back to the Intro Three. The work to minimize the handcuffing and mechanical restraints by precinct officers and school safety personnel for students experiencing emotional crisis does not fully place other responsibility of safety with the student in the forefront. I want to talk about four points. One, it's essential to separate the students' actions and needs away from the police's action and response. And also, the school counselors and restorative justice practitioners are professionals. They are the experts in de-escalation and emotional crisis of supporting the youth. Two, the de-escalation work of the bill is a step towards restorative justice policies. In order, however, the de-escalation to be effective and actionable, there must be counselors and restorative justice practitioners in the schools. Three, the training and funding proposed for precinct officers must be redirected towards the support within our schools. Four, instead of, in the wording in the bill, it says, "Whether a student's behavior is believed to be the result of factors, including but not limited to age, medical conditions, and mental impairment, it should be assumed that the student is struggling." And the needs for de-escalation and support and not punitive or carceral measures. I will also submit this as a written testimony with academic references and policy.
Thank you for your testimony, Dawn Euster.
Good afternoon. My name is Dawn Euster. My perspective comes from working for over two decades as a civil rights lawyer dedicated to racial, social, and youth justice. Most recently, I was Advocates for Children of New York's Director of the School Justice Project, where I led the strategic integration of the organization's juvenile justice, school discipline, and mental health work, aiming to end the school-to-prison pipeline. I represented and oversaw a team of attorneys who represented students who had emotional, mental health challenges, as well as those who faced NYPD officers and handcuffs. I conceived and co-authored Advocates for Children's reports on NYPD child in crisis data that served as the impetus for Intro Three 2022. My perspective also comes from lived experience. Decades ago, as an adolescent, when I faced NYPD officers and handcuffs myself, when I was in emotional crisis in the community. I did not have a weapon, I did not threaten anyone, as students in schools similarly are in situations where they face NYPD. The trauma from this experience has remained with me, and undoubtedly, trauma remains with the thousands of students each year who face NYPD and are in emotional crisis. So I'm here in support of Intro Three 2022, and I'm grateful to Deputy Speaker Ayala for sponsoring this critical bill and for all the council members who support it. I also support Resolutions 473 and 534A. I think a couple of points I want to make in terms of things about the NYPD that they left out, which my colleague Rohini Singh at Advocates for Children mentioned, is that there was there was an increase, a nearly 20% increase in child in crisis incidents from 2021-22 school year to this last school year. And the disproportionality by race continues. The other thing that the NYPD not mentioned was that their patrol guide, their patrol guide explicitly talks about handcuffing restraining students for arrest or as they quote-unquote, "or as an emotionally disturbed person." So they are already criminalizing students who are, have emotional challenges in their own patrol guide. And I think it's really worth taking a look at that 215-13 that they drafted three years ago. It's definitely due for changes. I also want to say that I do support Intro III 2022 with some modifications. I don't think that the funding should be allocated to train law enforcement officers at all. They should not be responding to students in emotional crisis. Instead, we should absolutely be putting so much more funding into restorative practices, which of course, you are a huge champion of Chair Joseph, Mental Health Continuum, which is, we are seeing students, I am privileged to be a part of the group by weekly meeting the three agencies that are working diligently and the schools. We are seeing students getting expedited access to mental health care in those schools. We're seeing schools have, you know, clinicians that they have access to and alternatives in terms of building up the supports within the schools, including collaborative problem-solving and collaborative and proactive solutions, which are trauma-informed, evidence-based approaches. So these are things that I really encourage our city to, and city council to look at. These are investments that are tried and true about teaching skills, and I know you know this, so I'm preaching to the choir. There happens to be a conference, a live, free virtual conference that Lives in the Balance, one of the vendors is holding this Friday, which they talk about their model in depth. And, you know, last but not least, I want to say that what we're doing in the city is we're starting to make a huge shift in the community for adults, for everybody, in terms of there's a be-heard response model, right? Now, it's largely imperfect because these workers are EMT workers, paramedics, and social workers, which is great, which is fantastic. We need to add peer, crisis-trained peer specialists to that model, use that model in schools, and not be calling the police in, and also have more youth and family respite centers, you know, and use children's mobile crisis teams, crisis teams with timely responses. And these are all, again, as a last resort after using the evidence-based approaches, trauma-informed approaches in schools. So thank you so much for the opportunity to testify before you today, and I look forward to collaborating with you on implementation.
Thank you. Same likewise. Mental Health Continuum was very important to me, and that's why we fought for looking to get a baseline in the budget.
Yeah, we are incredibly grateful, so grateful to you. Thank you and your colleagues.
It's important to me, and I always tell them, young people are the reason why I do this work. Thank you.
Thank you so much to this panel. Our next panel, Ajifanta Moreno, Yara Takat, Hussein Yatabary, Wali Ula, Mufika Moshein, Fatima Theam, Reverend Mark Fowler, and Paulette Healy. Please make your way to the front. Ajifanta Moreno, you may begin your testimony.
Good evening, Chair Joseph, Chair Hanks, and all members of the council. We, my name is Ajifanta Moreno. I'm the Advocacy Program Manager at Muslim Community Network, and we're here today as an interfaith coalition, including students and youth, to testify in support of Resolution 476, New York City, to ask the Department of Education to include a religious diversity education curriculum that would make sure that hate, anti-religious hate crimes are immediately disclosed to parents, included in the annual public school reports, as well as training is given to educators and staff in these areas, and then that students have a curriculum that teaches them about religious traditions across the board. This resolution came about from a survey we did from that hate crime report, surveying community members on their experiences with hate crimes. For the Muslim community in particular, we found very alarming numbers. So anti-Muslim hate, Islamophobia has been on the rise since following 9/11, but when we did this survey in 20, between 2020 and 2021, we found that 76% of Muslims in New York City witnessed a hate crime. Over 40% experienced a hate crime, and out of that, we found a very alarming thing that youth ages 10 to 18 were 43.5% victims of those anti-Muslim hate crimes. Forty-seven percent of community members made a recommendation that they wanted to see more diversity, specifically religious diversity education, in New York City public schools because they were concerned about the bullying that the children were facing in schools. Just to share a little bit of what that looks like from student perspectives, which we have Yara here who'll speak, but some of the narratives that we've got, a 12-year-old female student expressed that a person at school, this person called me a freak for wearing a hijab. We have a 16-year-old student who said, "My friend was on the R train in Brooklyn when a man yelled at her and stated that Muslims are all terrorists and threatened to pull out a gun." We have someone else who experienced physical assault and said, "When I was in the elevator and they spit on my Islamic wear and headscarf." We believe that these incidents, especially happening in public schools, in 2020, the FBI found that over 41, over 41% of hate crime incidents that are happening in public schools are anti-hate crime, anti-religious hate crimes. So it's really important to zero in on this specific issue and address it by providing religious diversity education. I will let the panel share more information on the other aspects of why this resolution is important and timely at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony, Yara Takat.
Um, sorry, can you hear me? Good afternoon, Honorable Counsel. My name is Yara Takat. I'm a junior at the Bronx High School of Science and have been attending an NYC DOE public schools my entire life. I grew up going to the mosque, fasting during Ramadan, and confused why I had to skip school for Eid until I was in the second grade, when it became a holiday on the school calendar. I grew up learning about Christmas and Hanukkah during the holiday season from my teachers and my peers, seeing my friends confidently show off their first communion dresses, but I was confused, why were they wearing wedding dresses as kids? I grew up fortunate, though, that my parents would explain to me what these events and holidays meant for the people celebrating and why they celebrated them impartially when I asked. Others, however, have been evidently less fortunate than me in this experience, where it is clear that their parents or their guardians projected prejudices against the groups being asked about instead. I was in the first grade when I received a death threat from my classmate. It was a small class of 14 kids, including myself, and I was the only Muslim. Others knew because I was absent on Eid. This classmate told me, "I'm going to come to your house at night and murder you because you're a terrorist." I remember this vividly mainly because of what happened after. I stared blankly at him, confused. I responded, "Sorry, my parents won't let you. I only have sleepovers with my girl cousins." I didn't know what the word murder meant. Later that day, as my mom was paying for a parking ticket after a doctor's appointment, I asked her, "What did murder mean?" I remember how shocked she was that her little baby was asking what such a violent word meant, but what is engraved in my memory is the whore in the woman's, is the woman in the woman paying for her ticket beside us's face when I told my mom where and how I learned of this word. I knew what the word terrorist meant, though, because we learned about it at the beginning of that year after a moment of silence in remembrance of 9/11. This event still plays in my mind. How could a child be so full of hate? My questions were answered a few years later by that same very kid. I was in the fourth grade when the 2016 presidential elections were taking place. There was already an increasing presence of Islamophobia in the media, but I didn't expect it to be so prevalent in my own school. I was waiting outside of my math class when he threatened that his cop father would deport my family, quote, "back to Afghanistan because, quote, 'we caused 9/11.'" This horrified me, not only because I was scared that my life as I knew it would change, but also because he threatened to send me to a country whose cultures and languages were completely foreign to me because my family is from India. My Muslim math teacher was within an earshot and dragged him to the dean's office, to where I was called the next day for him to read me an apology letter where he said he wouldn't bully anyone for the rest of the school year. There was no additional action taken. I had exposure to the beauty of my faith because I practice it, but this boy's only exposure to Islam was when teachers would teach us about what happened on 9/11 and what his parents were telling him my people were doing. Looking back on these circumstances, even after the toll it has taken on my confidence and pride in my identity, it makes sense how a child could bring such thoughts to a school and project them onto others. In the ninth grade in history class, we were finally learning about religions across the world, but it was too little and too late. Disproportionate amounts of time were spent on the major religions of the world. For example, we spent six weeks learning about Christianity in Europe compared to two weeks on Judaism and a mere four days on Islam. I was so excited to tell my classmates about how much I love Eid and how Ramadan brings me closer to my faith, but hearing my teacher call the Kaba the black cube and that we fast all day every summer was disappointing, to say the least, and also extremely confusing. Why is half of the stuff that my teacher is saying wrong, and why doesn't she even care? I stayed after class that day to inform her of some misinformation in her slides, hoping that she would correct it, but the first, after, but the first thing she did was mock me, quote, "You took issue? Uh-huh," end quote. I continued telling her that Ramadan doesn't happen strictly in the summer, it follows the Islamic calendar that is lunar, something which wasn't even mentioned in the slides, and she cut me off, saying that she was a public school teacher on a public school salary and that it wasn't her responsibility to teach us about, quote, "these little religions, Islam, Christianity, Judaism, and Hinduism," end quote, and if I wanted to learn about them so bad, I could go to a mosque or synagogue myself. The next day, she kept me after class, telling me her outburst was because she hadn't had her coffee. Even when we were supposed to be learning about religions, the lack of structure in what needs to be known left half the people in my class wondering whether Muslims pray five times a day or seven when time came to take the unit test. When the one place we go to learn and prepare to enter society will not teach us about the things we need to know about the world we live in, there is no question why religious and race-based hatred is so prevalent, not only in adults but also children. It is because the eventual education we do receive is too little and too late. Learning about the richness of the cultures and religions surrounding me earlier on in school would have helped prevent not only external but also internal xenophobia in myself and in others. And if stricter measures were taken to reprimand and prevent targeted bullying like I and millions of other students have experienced and continue to experience in schools by peers and even administrators, more people would feel safe in schools and other diverse environments, and hate crimes would indefinitely decrease. An introduction of such measures can ensure stronger community in schools and prevent living life, living a life with trauma. And such experiences that have detrimental effects on people can be prevented with this resolution, which advocates for religious diversity being introduced in school curriculums. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony, Hussein Yatabary.
Dear Chief, Chair Joseph, and esteemed members of the Education Committee and City Council, my name is Hussein Yatabary, and I'm before you today as the Executive Director of Muslim Community Network. Our vision has been to empower diverse Muslim communities that stretch across our five boroughs through civic engagement, leadership development, and unwavering advocacy. Imagine a world where a child is judged not by the content of their character but by the misrepresentation of the religion they practice or the culture they were born into. Sadly, that's not just a figment of my imagination or our imagination, it's the reality many face right here in our city. The weight of religious and cultural misunderstandings has manifested in a startling rise in hate crimes against our fellow New Yorkers. Last year alone, we bore witness to nearly 220 such incidents in the city. The FBI's Uniform Crime Reporting Program unveils a disheartening trend of growing hate crimes against Jews, Sikhs, and Muslims since 2015. Even more disconcerting, NYPD figures show a 7% spike in hate crimes correlating with the recent tensions in occupied Palestine and Israel. In just over two weeks, 51 hate crimes have been reported, primarily targeting Jewish, Sikh, and Muslim communities. Our schools, which should be sanctuaries of learning and understanding, are not exempt. Bias-related incidents are alarmingly prevalent, and even worse, they often go unreported. Data from the Muslim Community Network's Hate Crimes Report of 2022, with over 200 New York City Muslims, reveal 76% of Muslims in NYC have been spectators to a bias incident. About half believe broader religious diversity across various institutions starting in our schools is necessary. Drawing from my own background as an educator, I taught for seven years. I personally witnessed, mediated, and educated students on religious diversity. I had no formal training. I navigated a bias-related incident involving a young Muslim girl in the fifth grade. She was told she would go to hell for being Muslim and not Catholic. Her peers did not understand why she wore a hijab in her class and mocked her for it. While the students did face consequences, this situation was preventable. I received no formal training in religious diversity, no other teacher did, but they used the Muslim on staff to mediate the situation. The students were not exposed to a religious diversity curriculum. This situation did not need to happen. I urge the Department of Education and I urge the City Council to push this resolution through to collaborate intensively with nonprofits, faith-based organizations, and the clergy. Together, let's design a curriculum for all grade levels that celebrates religious diversity, working actively to eliminate prejudice and foster unity from a young age. It's not just about the curriculum, though. We talked earlier here today about training and professional development. Educators themselves need professional development, staff, principals, ensuring they're equipped to foster an environment of acceptance. It's our duty to ensure that no school staff member, parent, or student ever experiences friction based on external circumstances that have unfairly targeted religions and nationalities. Furthermore, we demand transparent reporting of hate crimes in schools. The Department of Education must prioritize accurate classification, timely notifications, and absolute transparency in disclosing hate crime statistics in their annual reports. Parents, community leaders, and educators alike need this information to understand patterns and proactively address such situations. In conclusion, we urge the adoption of City Council Resolution Number 476. Let's stand united in condemning any form of bullying or harassment based on religious or cultural practices. Let our schools be beacons of hope, acceptance, and unity in these divisive times. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you so much for your testimony, Wali Ula.
Good afternoon, Chair Joseph and all members of the New York City Council Education Committee. My name is Wali Ula, and I'm the Community Education Coordinator at the Muslim Community Network. at the Muslim Community Network, a nonpartisan and interfaith civil society organization and empowering Muslims across all five boroughs. We greatly appreciate the Education Committee for finally granting us a hearing on Resolution 476 on short but long-awaited notice and the timing. You know, though unfortunate, in the larger scope of domestic and international affairs is especially crucial when we've seen not only a spike in bias-based incidents and hate crimes targeting Muslims, Jews, and Sikhs across New York City and the country, but unequally bothersome inflammation of social tensions that affects the safety and livelihood of said groups in the workplace and, most importantly, what this resolution is seeking to bring light to, our K-12 public education system. Currently, more than 800,000 Muslims live in New York City. You know, not even, you know... you know, accounting for demographic shifts after the 2020 census or, you know, you know, the ongoing migrant crisis, given that, you know, many migrants in Europe, their families also happen to be, you know, coming from majority Muslim countries and regions. You know, even before, you know, you know, the events of, you know, September 11th, at least, you know, half a million Muslims were still residing in the city. You know, though, you know, we, you know, commend state and local elected officials for, you know... you know, gradually trying to take more proactive measures to infer... ensure that, you know, our spiritual and religious needs are properly accommodated for, just like every other faith. There's still more to be done, you know. We're proud to say that so far, this resolution has 16 sponsors and counting, with its previous iteration introduced in 2020 as Resolution 1257, sponsored by a former council member then, Daniel Drum, along with 22 additional council members and the support of the Public Advocate of the City of New York. You know, this resolution, you know, you know, you know, we're, you know, not really, you know... we're not expecting educators or, you know, DOE to staff to be, you know, experts or, you know, scholars or, you know, have, you know, the theocratic knowledge on par with faith or clergy leaders, but simply to provide, you know, continue providing the space to either those educators, staff, or nonprofit community, civil society organizations with lived experience and necessary credible theological expertise around any faith background to function as something akin to, you know, public educational chaplains, for lack of any other phrasing right now, and, you know, be competently and impartially trained to deescalate and effectively address any incident if, you know, a certain bullying or harassment tactic might involve direct or passive religious discrimination. Anger and distrust, you know, sorry. Anger and disgust rooted in, you know, fear and misunderstanding, you know. It's not really a unique, you know, experience for any singular religious group. You know, that having been said, you know, we reaffirm our commitment to the goals of this resolution, not just as Muslim New Yorkers, but also Muslims, you know, such as myself and my siblings, you know, who attended New York City public schools during the years following waves of Islamophobia unleashed after September 11th and the 2016 election season. 22 years is frankly two decades too long to have to continue advocating, if not plead, to our fellow New Yorkers and our government to not only, you know, treat us as proper American equals, but to be more proactive against repeating, encouraging, or snowballing via public or media channels the same divisive rhetoric that already otherized half a million New Yorkers after 9/11. Also not, you know, counting anyone else who, you know, remotely resembled somebody brown, South Asian, Middle Eastern, North African, or, you know, even practiced the Sikh or Hindu faiths, while also being, you know, the same victims of senseless ignorant acts of violence and bigotry. The City of New York, again, already had 20 years to get this right. The ball is in your court now, so just get it right. Thank you again to the Chair and the rest of the joint committee body for allowing me to testify, and I will yield the rest of my time.
Thank you so much for your testimony, Musfika Moshein.
Thank you. Hello, council members. Hello, honorable council members. My name is Musfika Moshein. I am the Women's Program Coordinator at MCN. But I'm going to be speaking on behalf of a program alumni of ours. So this is her testimony as follows. She wasn't able to be here today, so this is her testimony. Hello, thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Mammonatu Mohammed. I am an educator and teacher from the Bronx. I am a Women's Program alumni and community member, and I'm here to testify in support of Resolution 476. As we are well aware, religious hate crime has been on the rise recently, especially when it comes to Black and Brown individuals. There is a rise in hate crimes against the Muslims, Jewish people, and Sikhs. One of the reasons why many people leave their countries in the first place an immigrant is because they are seeking religious freedom. To leave your country with high hopes and face the same thing you're running away from is very contradicting. My cousin Amina was in middle school when she had an experience where she was bullied for being Muslim. Her classmates would always question why she wore her hijab, but she tried to never pay them any attention. They used to ask if she did it because she was trying to be bold or edgy. One day, they decided to take the initiative to rip her hijab off of her head. That experience was very traumatizing for a young girl. She was only 14 years old. She decided then to stop wearing her hijab because she was worried for her safety. That isn't right. She shouldn't have been forced to make such a decision because of fear and other people's ignorance. Passing this bill will allow for increased awareness on different religions and a better understanding for students and a better understanding for students on the different religious lifestyles of different people. Passing this bill will educate students and decrease the amount of hate crimes that are taking place. I urge the City Council to pass this resolution and stand in support of diversity and inclusion. Thank you once again for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you for your testimony, Fatima Thiam.
Hello, honorable council members, Chair Councilwoman Rita Joseph and members of the Education Committee. My name is Fatima Cham. I'm the Youth Program Coordinator at MCN, Muslim Community Network, and I'll be reading the testimony of one of our alumni and our Women Program, Fatima Omaruli-Fulli. As it goes, she salute you all. Hello, honorable council member, Chair Councilwoman Rita Joseph and members of the Education Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Fatima Omaruli-Fulli. I'm a patient navigator and a community member of Muslim Community Network, here to testify today in support of Resolution 476. Hate crimes can have a profound impact on youth mental health. Being targeted or witness such act can lead to feelings of fear, anxiety, and depression. It can erode self-esteem and self-worth, making it difficult for young people to develop a positive self-image. In cases, victim may experience post-traumatic stress disorder, PTSD, which can persist into adulthood. Additionally, hate crime can contribute to a sense of isolation and social exclusion, feeling loneliness and despair. To address this issue, it is crucial to promote tolerance, inclusivity, and provide support to affected youth. Immediate notification to parents empower them to protect and support their children, both emotionally and legally, and ease a crucial step in addressing the impact of hate crime on youth mental health. I urge the Council to pass this Resolution 476 to stand in support for this resolution. Thank you once again for the opportunity to testify.
Thanks for your testimony, Reverend Mark Fowler.
Good evening. My name is Reverend Mark Fowler and I'm the CEO of the Tannenbaum Center for Interreligious Understanding. Very proud to be here with all of you and stand in support of the passage of Resolution 476. We know as a community that educating students about religious differences creates societies that are safer from the intolerance and the hatred and the bullying that stems from that ignorance. And in real time, we're seeing such acts play out today in anti-Jewish, anti-Muslim, anti-Sikh hate crimes in response to the war between Israel and Hamas. For 31 years, Tannenbaum has worked to promote justice and build respect for difference, including religious difference in schools. Our experience working with educators, students, parents, and administrators for over 25 years has taught us that not constructively, including critical inquiry about religion's role in society, by doing that, we're creating generations which may not respect religious difference nor recognize its powerful contribution to society. Rather, we create generations that are more vulnerable to stereotypes and fear mongering. When education reflects the diversity of religious identities, it reduces bullying behaviors in students. Our curricula and our trainings are designed to facilitate conversations across lines of difference and help students recognize religious difference as something to be celebrated rather than something to be feared. When students actively explore each other's religious identities, they build essential social and emotional skills like active listening, respectful questioning, and open-minded curiosity, which helps them recognize and challenge stereotypes. When learned early enough, these behaviors continue outside of the classroom, helping form active and engaged community members. I was a public school, high school teacher for 11 years at the Brooklyn Comprehensive Night High School. I was an English teacher and for nine of those years, I was the coordinator of Student Affairs. And as it related to professional development, never in my pre-service education, which took place at Duke University, nor in my career with the Department of Education was I ever presented with the opportunity to examine my own implicit bias toward people from other groups and certainly none of the implicit biases that I had towards people from other religious traditions. Teachers report to us at Tannenbaum that they are unfamiliar and uncomfortable with talking about religion, which limits their ability to address issues of religious difference with their students. The Professional Development Directive in Resolution 476 gives the educators the pedagogical tools that they need to have respectful conversations about religious diversity, but also to explore their own biases and prejudices about the topic. I think that Resolution 476 addresses the root causes of hate and bullying. By combating ignorance, the most dangerous threat is not just to our students, but to our society. Resolution 476 is not only a good thing to do, it's the responsible thing to do to prepare our students for an increasingly diverse and vibrant world. And at Tannenbaum, we're proud to give Resolution 476 our full support and ask the members of the City Council to do the same.
Thank you so much for your testimony, Paullet Healy.
My name is Paullet Healy. I am a special education and D-75 advocate, and I have two children attending New York City public schools. I had an entire testimony prepared, which I will submit later, with facts and data and numbers and things of that nature. But sitting here and hearing the different testimonies from this panel and hearing the testimonies of our children, who testified from Dignity in schools earlier today, it's hard not to think about how this didn't happen overnight. The reason, you know, our children are being targeted and there's so much divisiveness going on, not only in our schools but in our world, is because we don't have a safe space to talk about these things. And our teachers don't feel empowered to be able to have honest and open conversations about what our children are going through and how confusing this entire world is. And this didn't happen overnight. And we know that because funding is lacking where it's needed and it's being pushed to agencies that have money to burn, this is the end result. This is the end result of not having restorative practices in our schools. This is the end result of not having culturally responsive curriculum being able to be implemented, you know, within our schools that actually reflects the populations that we're serving. This is an immediate response to the continued policing that we're constantly having in our schools, where we have teachers who are villainizing some children and uplifting others, you know, saying, "Boys will be boys. It's okay that you rip that hijab off of her head." No, someone has to say no. And quite honestly, you know, sitting in this meeting for as many hours as we have, with all of the department heads that were in this panel, the fact that they were so ill-prepared and with no answers and with no data, they didn't earn their paycheck today. And that was a multimillion-dollar panel that was sitting here today. So let's really think about how we're utilizing the money that's even going into the DOE, because it doesn't belong with, you know, directors, executives, super... whatever their titles are, because it's not hitting where it belongs, which is in our schools. And our schools are no longer safe havens for our children. We can talk about it. We could throw that word around as much as we want. But if our children don't feel that there's people in their school that they trust or that they feel that they're not being seen by the people who are tasked to take care of them and educate them, then there's no hope for our children. They're constantly going to be children in crisis, and these numbers are going to just continue escalating. So, you know, I had a whole story about a child in my district who, you know, was handcuffed and left in handcuffs for hours until his parents came to get him. And he was five. And he was forced to go back into that same kindergarten class the next day with no explanation about what he did wrong, with no support, and with no change in culture in that classroom. That teacher still treated him like crap when he went back because he was the behavior problem in that class. And he's five. So what hope do we have if we are not going to prioritize where we're spending our money, even within the agencies that are supposed to be doing good for our children? So my one ask is one thank you, City Council member Rita Joseph, for amplifying Transus Regulation 8412 because it's garbage, the way it's written right now. It totally takes away all the rights of parents and students and prioritizes, you know, the DOE to cover their butt, for sake of a better word, when they divert everything to legal counsel in incidences of crime and harm. But as City Council, when we are gearing up for these discussions about budget, because budget's always, you know, it's, we say it all the time. It's our morality in a document, right? Really look at the MOU between the DOE and the NYPD because the amount of money that is constantly being laundered from... away from our schools and back into NYPD is criminal. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony and thank you to all of our panelists. Our next panel, Colson... Did everyone?
Oh, they didn't.
I'm sorry.
Do you have one of these?
Yeah.
Go ahead. You can say your name.
Good evening. Thank you, Chair Joseph and Chair Hanks and for the Education Committee of the New York City Council. My name is the Reverend Chloe Brier. I'm director at the Interfaith Center of New York, an organization that's been around for a long time here in the city that works with grassroots and immigrant faith leaders from different traditions and offers a lot of civics education. So we join this faith-based and secular community organizations along with civics, civic institutions and educators to support Resolution 476 and we strongly request that the whole, the City Council do as well. We are, you know, as you know, we are asking for the City Department of Education to provide religious diversity curricula for those students of all different ages and professional development for teachers in this area as well. One thing that the Interfaith Center has done for a long time, about 10 years, is to work with the National Endowment for the Humanities and Union Theological Seminary to provide three-week modules in the summer for public, private, and parochial teachers from all over the country. And together, we have worked on religious literacy and also taught a lot about the First Amendment and how it is that as a public school teacher, you can educate about religious diversity without running afoul of the First Amendment. And so that's a really important component as well and something that we've had... and something that we've had good success with. And I just want to hold up two reasons for the support. One, which, the support of this resolution. The first of which my colleagues have, you know, mentioned, which is just the human cost of religious illiteracy, which we've seen too much of in the rise of hate crimes of late. And the second reason I want to add, however, that hasn't been mentioned so much today, has to do with the way that religious diversity education, when it's done in this way, is really a road into civics education. Because the minute you have to put yourself in the position of a classmate or a teacher who's religiously other than you, you are exercising a civic muscle, if you will. You're putting yourself in the space and in the, through your imagination, in the shoes of someone else, which as Americans, we have to do, and particularly as New Yorkers, if we wish to create and hold fast to this vibrant kind of civic fabric that we're part of. So that is it for my comments today. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony. Our last panel will be Hiba Khalil, Kulsum Tappal, and Harwendo Singh.
Thank you so much. My name is Hiba Khalil, and I am the Executive Director of the New York Metro Chapter of MGAege, a Muslim civic engagement and advocacy nonprofit that empowers Muslim voters and advocates for policies that affect our community on the state, local, and federal level. I support City Council Resolution 476, calling upon the New York City Department of Education to consult with faith-based organizations to develop and provide all grade levels with a curriculum that focuses on religious diversity, to provide professional development focused on, to provide professional development focused on religious diversity for teachers, staff, and administrators, to ensure accurate classification of hate crimes in annual school reports and immediate notification and full disclosure to parents of hate crime statistics, and to ensure that schools take actions to condemn bullying and harassment based on religious clothing, food requirements, and the need for prayer spaces and time year-round. There are around one million Muslims in New York City, and this resolution is more important than ever. There has been a worrying uptick in anti-Muslim, anti-Jewish, and anti-Sikh rhetoric, hate crimes across the city, especially against young people and those that are visibly identifiable faith groups. We are seeing levels of anti-Muslim, anti-Jewish, and anti-Sikh rhetoric that is reminiscent of post-9/11. This has led to discrimination, vandalism of houses of worship, and hate crimes. Most recently, a sixteen-year-old Muslim girl was attacked on the subway and a Sikh man in Queens on a bus. It is especially important to make sure that young people feel protected in their schools and that they are not targeted because of their faith. Religious-based bullying and harassment is often due to misunderstanding or negative perceptions about how others express their faith. Religious diversity in education can help address hate crimes and create healthy school environments for students, educators, and staff. Researchers and advocates contend that lessons in schools that address religious biases and inaccuracies can help decrease religious-based bullying. Curriculums in Chicago and Michigan have been developed, and in New York City, the Center for Asian Children and Families is advocating for an inclusive curriculum to prevent misunderstandings about the AAPI community. Educating students not only reduces hate crimes, but can also promote civic leadership and tolerance among youth. It is imperative that New York City be an example and pave the way for school curriculum inclusivity of prominent religions and all others. There is a dire need to address hate crimes and to create policies and laws that address religious intolerance and anti-religious bigotry. There's also a dire need to improve and enhance access to resources to educators and staff. Teachers often do not have the resources to teach about world religions and how to dispel biases and hatreds. New York is a city that prides itself on its diversity. According to the Public Religion Research Institute, New York City has the largest number of Jewish and Muslim residents of any municipality in the U.S. Because of this, we should take a leading role in encouraging a robust line of policies that support religious diversities and address harmful rhetoric against different faith groups through education. We ask that you pass Resolution 476 to protect youth in New York City, enhance their understanding of other groups, and work with educators and staff by connecting them to resources that can elevate their understanding of others. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony, and thank you to all of our panelists. If there's any more, if there are any more people in the room who would like to testify, please make your way to the Sergeant-at-Arms desk at the back to fill out a witness slip. We will now move on to our virtual panelists. Just as a reminder to our virtual panelists, please wait for the Sergeant-at-Arms to announce that you may begin your testimony after you are unmuted. Our first panel, Bee Gibbs, Anuj Bandari, Brittany Kaiser, and Erin Reed. Bee Gibbs, you may begin your testimony.
Give me a moment, please. Hi, my name is Alexis Quickman. I'm a student circle keeper as well as a RJ representative at Harvest Collegiate High School and a member of Teachers Unite. I'm here today to say we need more counselors, social workers, and less police. I want to urge you to find more useful things that would actually help young people in schools, especially low-income schools, which always get the short end of the stick. During practices like restorative justice helps support students and helps us thrive. It urges students to build a stronger and more community. I'm sorry. Where was I? Okay, stronger community with each other by listening to what they have to say. A big part of restorative practices involves the youth. Restorative justice empowers youth to use their voices to make a change. My experience in past schools were not the best. They would practice punitive punishments, which means they would give out harsh and harmful punishments for bad behavior. This lets students down a more difficult road in their life. Using punitive practices disturbs not only their learning, but minor problems will stay with them and follow them for the rest of their lives. These types of students that face nonstop punitive practices are more likely to end up not coming to school or worse, go down a long path of negative behavior. The problems these, the problems some students face most likely could have been prevented if they just had someone to talk to instead of being punished for the mistake they said or did. I want more than, what I want more than anything today is to urge you to pass a budget that moves money away from policing young people and towards the restorative justice practices, which means funding money to higher-school-based restorative, restorative justice counselors. This includes youth activism, parent coordinators, counselors, and social workers. This brings huge support. It also encourages students to build a safe and welcoming community and knowledge what they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Anuj Bandari? Anuj Bandari, you may begin your testimony.
Hi there, and with peace. My name is Anuj Bandari. I'm a restorative justice organizer with Restorative Justice Initiative and testifying today with Teachers Unite. In addition, for a number of years, I was also a restorative justice coordinator in New York City Public Schools. I am here today to advocate for the investment in community-based support positions and restorative justice coordinators in New York City schools that are not trained by or associated with the New York City Police Department. During my time as a restorative justice coordinator, I was able to be a part of extremely transformative work with young people, with educators, with parents, with organizers, especially with young people, watching them grow from curious students into facilitators, into circle keepers, and to go to resources in times of conflict. And also simultaneous to this, my time working in New York City schools was also defined by seeing what happens when resources are continually taken away from staffing positions that otherwise support the needs of our growing young folks. They become unsustainable and unfair to the health of our student community. A crucial piece of restorative justice work and movement building is understanding that a community holds responsibility for safety to one another rather than holding that within a single entity. When funding is reduced for support roles in schools, those responsibilities don't go away. Instead, they're implicitly added onto existing staffing jobs in schools that then make supportive environments harder for folks to sustain together. Not only this, but the reliance on school safety agents for support roles erases and ignores the history of restorative justice organizing and movement building that's taken place across schools, both in New York City and across the nation. A history that is powerful, alive, transforming lives on a relational level daily and not inclusive of a historically oppressive entity in order to respond to harm and conflict. The proximity of our young people to policing agencies makes the very human lives of our students data points for continuing surveillance that continues to criminalize them. We know from years in this movement that police in schools create a foundation of distrust and a sense of fear, one that is unable to sustain a healthy environment of learning, of growth, of transformation, especially for the young folks in our city with histories of trauma. Why take this route in a city with such rich, ample evidence of healing alternatives that are led by and for young people, by and for educators, by and for families? Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Brittany Kaiser?
Hi, my name is Kaiser, and I teach elementary art. I'm testifying today with Teachers Unite. Thank you all for your time today. Earlier, Councilmember Joseph asked about an increase in NYPD presence in public schools that was concerning to staff and students. And the school safety administrator responded that the community should think about whether there might have been an increase in incidents that required NYPD involvement. I think this really gets to the crux of the misunderstanding here. My perspective as a teacher is that indeed, incidents of conflict and violence have increased. We have a lot of kids who are traumatized and in crisis, and their disruptive behaviors as a result. It's the apparent assumption that NYPD involvement is the correct response to these behaviors. Meanwhile, when asked about restorative justice, the same administrator said, "I can't talk to restorative justice." So when we talk about NYPD in schools, we are only talking about punishment. No amount of punishment can heal trauma. No amount of punishment can teach a student how to have positive and peaceful interactions with their peers. The good news is, we know what works. Hiring counselors and school social workers works. Implementing thoughtful, holistic, and proactive restorative justice programming works. Not Project Pivot, real restorative justice. Educators, students, and families have consistently shown up to hearings and to panel for educational policy meetings to fight for those things. But again and again, we are ignored by this mayor and by the panel which acts as his rubber stamp. The funding and infrastructure for restorative justice in schools, which was finally beginning to get off the ground right at the beginning of Adam's term, was unceremoniously cut. Chauncey spoke earlier to the fact that the new money earmarked for restorative justice seems to be being diverted to Adam's friends in Project Pivot. The school's budget has been cut over and over and is about to be cut again so that schools are operating on a skeleton crew and don't have enough staff to cover IEP mandates, let alone an extra person to run in and keep everyone safe when there's a fight or a student in crisis. It feels more and more intentional that the resources in our schools that are dedicated to caring for and educating young people are being whittled away while there seems to be never-ending funding for cops. Because of the budget cuts and the lack of flexibility within the budget, both individual schools and the system as a whole are under immense pressure to educate our students with fewer and fewer resources. To be clear, cops are not a resource. Councilmembers, because New York City is currently under mayor's control, your role is really crucial here. We need you to intervene and stop this cycle of defunding and criminalization in our schools. Please come to the PEP meetings and use your public platform to call out the panel for educational policy when they inevitably ignore hours and hours of public comments from community stakeholders and approve every new expensive contract or overpolicing initiative that the mayor asks them to. I ask you to vote down any budget, any bill, that proposes to increase funding to the NYPD.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
The funding our schools deserve. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Erin Reed?
You may begin.
My name is Erin. I'm a visual arts educator at a Title I high school in District Two. I'm testifying with Teachers Unite, and I firmly believe that cops do not belong in our schools. And I first want to acknowledge that our students face a number of very real and present risks and threats to their safety, and I share the concerns, the worry, the fear that we all have. However, the answer to creating more safety and addressing these fears is not more police. Police often escalate situations, as demonstrated in many of the examples provided tonight. Black and brown students are disproportionately impacted and targeted by police presence, contributing to the widely documented school-to-prison nexus. Police make our students feel unsafe, surveilled, harassed. When police are in schools, violence is only met with more violence and with more punishment. And the answer to ensuring our children's safety is not more police. So I'll repeat it again, right? The answer, it's more root deep. We have to fund our schools fully, to echo all these comments I've heard tonight, allowing them, the schools the opportunity to provide this holistic safety for our children. So that includes ensuring that our schools have ample adequate mental health services in every single school. It includes strengthening and funding more restorative justice practices and resources in our schools. It even includes things like having well-funded and robust after-school programming to offer youth, you know, supportive structures and opportunities for their time. It includes finding ways to provide additional supports for our families to address their broader needs, including for food, for shelter, for other services. And it includes supporting as well a curriculum and programming that centers social, emotional learning and well-being as well as diversity, equity, and inclusion. And there's just so much more to be said and so many better solutions that have already been reflected tonight than more police. I cannot tell you how much it would positively impact my school community if we had the ability to have more counselors and more restorative justice coordinators. With just the limited resources we have, I've seen so many critical and necessary interventions guided by those practitioners and by teachers and community members. Some fights don't escalate, or they never start in the first place. Students can learn to be accountable for their own actions. Students don't feel discarded or pushed out or thrown away. So I just want to stand with the teachers who are here and community members more broadly who are here, calling you to allocate money to the staff, the resources on all these practices that actually make our schools safe and take it away from policing. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony, and thank you to everyone on that panel. We will now move on to our next virtual panel. Lupe Hernandez, Linda Livingston, and Melissa Andra. Lupe Hernandez, you may begin.
You may begin.
I can give you guys some money for, can I give you cash though? I figured you'd be...
Lupe Hernandez, you may begin your testimony.
I apologize. I'm only here listening in the capacity of the office of public advocate. He has already submitted his testimony. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Linda Livingston?
You may begin.
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, good evening to you all. So forgive me, I'm still at work. But I'm a parent of a student who attends school in District Two in Manhattan. And I firmly believe schools should be places where our kids could be cared for, learn, make mistakes, and grow. However, because of violent and aggressive school policing and suspension practices, school safety can easily lead to incarceration. My son and my family were confronted with the disaster of school security when my son was bullied in school. He was the victim of bullying, but quickly became the offender. Unfortunately, unbeknownst to anyone at home, he never said anything to anyone at home and also didn't feel safe with school staff to address his concerns, so he acted on his own behalf. Instead of the school principal and staff addressing what took place, especially when we presented proof that he was being bullied, they decided that calling the school safety officers would be their best option for a student who has never been in contact with school security officers, lest more be in trouble in school. School oftentimes know the family, students, the homes that students come from, and what support is given to their students. How do you think this would affect the sixteen-year-old child that is met with a room full of school agents with aggression and being spoken to like he is an adult in police custody? This is his pact at my son on so many different levels. He didn't want to return to school. I kept him home for most of the school year. I even... I even hired tutors so that he would stay on task with schoolwork, to then be told he was going to be held back because of attendance, and then he had school truancy, which is the principal, "Come to my home for absences," when we agreed with the principal that he would stay home until we saw another school. All the other schools that were offered to us were high truancy, metal detectors, et cetera. So we decided that he would return to the school that he attended. Had he not had family support, he would have been unfairly treated, shunned, and scorned. What happened to students who don't have that support? I'm here because ending the School to Prison pipeline is deeply important to me, and it starts with school security being inside of our schools, not knowing how to address situations other than with aggression and force, which can be very overwhelming and traumatic to students. They say they're here to protect, but that's not the situation. It's a system, and they're following that system to target black and brown students. School safety is oftentimes there with intimidation, aggression, and bullying tactics portraying themselves as police officers.
Your time has expired. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Melinda Andra.
You may begin.
Good afternoon. My name is Melinda Andra. I'm the Director of the Education Advocacy Project at the Legal Aid Society. I want to thank Chairperson Joseph and Hanks and the Committees on Education and Public Safety for holding this hearing. The Legal Aid Society represents New York City public school students in special education matters, disciplinary hearings, child welfare, juvenile, and criminal legal matters in New York City. Many of our clients are children with disabilities who have underserved mental health needs. Many have suffered from trauma. Many have experienced homelessness, abuse, neglect, food insecurity, and family separations. The children we work with face significant challenges in accessing the mental health supports that they need, and they attend schools that over-rely on police or EMS rather than providing the emotional support. Disproportionately, there are students of color who live in communities where they are over-surveiled by police. The nature of police interactions with students also relates to the need for Resolution 473, endorsing the Right to Remain Silent Act. Decades of research establish that children do not understand Miranda warnings or the consequences of waiving their constitutional rights. This is even more true when applied to children with disabilities, many of whom have disabilities that interfere with their ability to read or understand Miranda warnings. And young people are particularly vulnerable to high-pressure interrogation techniques, which sometimes lead to false confessions. As a result, we have an overrepresentation of people with disabilities in the juvenile and criminal legal system throughout New York State, which is why we also need the City Council to pass Resolution 753. We agree with many here today, most importantly, the students that have spoken to you, that support a redistribution of the city's resources away from the NYPD and towards school staff that can provide mental health supports and restorative justice. However, as long as we have police officers in our school, there must be training and accountability. For 25 years, the NYPD has had the flexibility that Inspector Taylor wants, and it has led to abuses. We therefore support the passage of Introduction 03 and Resolutions 753 and 473. Our written policy will provide additional information about the research. But I want to tell a story of a legal aid client who was represented by both our juvenile rights and criminal defense practices, who I will call Mia. Mia is 17 years old. We began representing her five years ago, when her parents were charged with having abused her. She has a diagnosis of PTSD and depression. She's never been in any trouble before, and she doesn't get any special education services. But two weeks ago, she had an argument with her boyfriend at school, and in emotional distress, she attempted to remove herself by leaving school. As she walked through the hallway crying, a school administrator called after her, telling her to go into the office. Mia fled toward the door. There was no suspicion she...
Your time has expired. Thank you.
You could finish.
Thank you. There was no suspicion that she had conducted, she had done any criminal act. She merely failed to comply with the directive. With tears streaming, she was clearly having an emotional crisis. At this point, a school safety agent blocked the door to prevent her from leaving, and two other agents attempted to physically restrain her. She panicked and tried to get away. She pushed the SSA, who was blocking the door, and she began flailing her arms and kicking her feet. She struck one of the SSAs who was attempting to restrain her. She was handcuffed in front of her peers. Officers from the precinct were called, and she was questioned in front of administrators and police. And she stated that she pushed and kicked because she was just trying to leave. No social worker or mental health professional was present. Rather than providing the mental health support she needed, officers took her to the precinct. She was charged in the youth part of Adult Court with assault in the second degree, two counts of assault in the third degree, two counts of attempted assault in the third degree, and two counts of menacing. In addition to her pending court case, she's facing a lengthy suspension, where the school described her actions as a violent attack and is requesting a 40 to 180-day suspension. The school is treating her statement that she pushed and failed at the SSAs because she wanted to get away as a confession of having assaulted a police officer. This experience has further traumatized Mia. She's expressed shame about having to return to her school and facing her peers. And as pointed out by Deputy Speaker Ayala, she has now been trained to fear police officers. We want our students to be safe, but NYPD, but the New York City schools overly rely on the NYPD for discipline. Police should not be involved in routine disciplinary issues, and we urge the Council to pass Introduction 3 and also to pass Resolutions 753 and 473. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Our next panel, Karan Korgill.
Starting time.
Rita Talib, Cecilia Tauber, and Anthony Springer. Karan Korgill, you may begin your testimony.
Starting time.
Thank you. Good afternoon, or good evening, rather. My name is Karen Korgill, and I'm the Executive Director of the Sick American Legal Defense and Education Fund, SALDEF, the oldest national sick American advocacy group in the U.S. Today, I'll be speaking about the sick's perspective on Resolution 476 and why it's important to support. As shared earlier, Resolution 476 calls on the New York City Department of Education to consult with faith-based organizations, develop and provide all grade levels with a curriculum that focuses on religious diversity education. This resolution is needed because we are seeing a rise in hate violence against minority religious communities across the country and in particular, in New York. The sick community is no exception. Recently, the Federal Bureau of Investigation released their 2022 Crimes in the Nation statistics, where they reported an increase in anti-sick, sick American hate crimes. The FBI documented 198 incidents of hate crimes against sick Americans, which is the highest number of hate crime incidents ever recorded by the government. The FBI's latest hate crime data reveals a disturbing trend for minority and religious communities in the United States. And this reflects what we are seeing and hearing from sick Americans across the country, as well as through our own studies. In 2020, SALDEF published the first-ever sick American survey to better understand the needs and experiences of our community. Among the findings, we saw that 58% of respondents indicated that they have been bullied or harassed because of their sick identity, and 63 of the respondents who wear turbans indicated they had been discriminated against or wearing one. We know there were two recent horrific assaults against sick community members, one on an MTA bus, a man punched a sick teenager in the back of the head, tried to knock his turban off, and told him, "We don't wear this in this country." And another, where an elderly sick man was assaulted and killed after a minor fender bender. These types of incidents are horrific and should not happen to anyone from any community anywhere. And how does education help? We know there is a deep lack of awareness of sick Americans and sikhism. In 2012, SALDEF conducted a study in conjunction with Stanford University called Turban Miss to better understand the broader American public's perception of sick and sick Americans. Among the findings of the study, roughly 70% of American public could not identify a pictured sick man as sick, and there's very little knowledge or awareness of their religion. SALDEF has implemented sick awareness training, working with government agencies on the federal, state, and local level. We continue to see benefits of education and training around religious diversity. Roughly 90% of those trained say they are better able to understand and relate to members of the sick community. We've also seen stronger relationships being built with community members. We know this approach can also work in schools. We strongly encourage you to support Resolution 476. We believe that it will be instrumental in curbing hate and promoting understanding. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Rita Talib.
You may begin.
Good evening, Chair Joseph and esteemed members of the Education Committee. Thank you for holding this hearing and for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Rita Talib, and I'm the former Community Education Program Coordinator for the Muslim Community Network, or MCN. For over two decades, since the aftermath of September 11th, 2001, MCN has dedicated itself to molding an accurate, public narrative of what it means to be Muslim by Muslims. In my role, I had the honor of leading our diversity education workshops. Our workshops aim to inform and equip educators, parents, public officials, and students with the tools and resources to address the needs of the Muslim community, to help break stereotypes and discrimination against Muslims, to facilitate community building between sects, racial, and ethnic groups, such as through our Sunni Shia dialogues, to increase awareness of Muslims, such as through community education workshops on the role of African-American Muslims in the history of the United States. Some of our presentations have included: Understanding Islam in the Muslim-American Experience, Inclusive Learning: Your Muslim-American Students, and Muslim Contributions to American History, and so many other presentations. During my time at MCN, I saw firsthand the positive and transformative impactful outcomes that these workshops had on our students, as well as school staff and leadership. For example, in our post-workshop surveys, 100% of attendees stated that they gained knowledge about Muslims that was not taught in their schools. For this reason and more, I fully support Resolution 476, and I urge this committee to adopt it. I wholeheartedly believe that those of us closest to the problems we are faces, we are facing, are indeed best suited to provide the solutions we need for true systemic change. Resolution 476 will provide us with the resources to do just that, so we can create a safe, just, and equitable NYC for all. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimonies, Cecilia Tauber.
You may begin.
Thank you, Chair Hanks and Chair Josephs and all committee members. My name is Cecilia Tauber. I'm the community organizer at Bronx Connect. We are an organization that provides wraparound services for at-risk and justice-involved youth within the five boroughs. Decades of research has proven that brains are not fully developed until you're mid-20s. Due to this fact, decision-making skills in young people under 18 years old are impaired. They think of the immediate moment rather than the future. This causes youth to say or do things that they do not mean, but is instead their automatic response when faced with stressful situations. Research has shown that 34% of young people under 18 falsely confess to crimes they did not commit. As mentioned earlier, at Bronx Connect, we work with justice-involved youth on a daily basis. Something I hear repeatedly among our participants is their lack of understanding basic constitutional rights. That being said, many of these same young people have ended up waiving their rights when faced with a custodial interrogation. This waiver does not correlate with understanding their rights, but rather their automatic response to those stressful situations, or by being coerced by parents and police. Across the state, laws prohibit minors from purchasing cigarettes, alcohols, and even whipped cream chargers. Why are we allowing the same children who are not allowed to purchase those items to waive their Miranda rights without fully understanding the meaning and consequences of waiving them? I urge the City Council to pass Resolution 473, sponsored by Councilwoman Caban, to call on New York State Legislature to pass, and the governor to sign the Youth Interrogation Bill, which is Senate Bill 1099 and Assembly Bill 1963. This would protect children during a custodial police interrogation. Thank you so much for the time, and I apologize for not being on camera. I am in transit.
No problem. Thank you so much for your testimony, Anthony Springer.
You may begin.
Yes, thank you for the time. I appreciate our Council, Chairperson Hanks, Chairperson Joseph, and the committees for hosting this time and allowing us the time to speak on this. As we've continually heard today, our youth need to be protected. You know, our youth are our vulnerable population. This should be one of the main focuses of our city. The, our youth are the carriers of our values, vision, and future. Currently, our justice system targets the underprivileged, smothering potential with overly punitive practices. And this is something that's continually been spoken about today, how police really don't understand how to interact with young people. I'm here supporting Reso 473, which really speaks about adding those layers of protection where our young people need those layers of protection. The Youth Interrogation Bill will make it mandatory that a young person has to have legal representation, legal counsel, prior to facing interrogation. As Cecilia just mentioned, we have high numbers of young people. Young people are three times more likely to waive their rights than adults, which is sad, really, to hear when we look at the fact that we have a system that really caters to adults rather than young people. This is why we need to pass this resolution. We found that over 90% of young people under the age of 18 waived those rights. And this really speaks to those facts that Cecilia just mentioned about the lack of impulse control, how they're eager to please the police, and they don't really understand the long-term consequences, as we know studies show that young people are still developing up until the age of five. So I urge, I urge the Council to pass Reso 473 in order to see our young people protected. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony, and thank you to everybody on that panel. If you hear your name, please use the raise hand feature. Solomon Bleeker, Chris Hassan, Rebecca Mayfield, Christopher Jeffries, Mamunatu Mohammed, Rabia Nassim, Amar Abdul Rahman, Salma Barkat Shah, Senor Cowr, Lamise Idris, Hiba Khalil, Jason Kwan. Please use the raise hand feature if you're logged onto the Zoom, or if there's anybody else logged onto Zoom who wishes to testify, please use the raise hand feature. That concludes our virtual testimony for today.
This concludes our education hearing, along with public safety.